We'll go live, you're live?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to the first hearing of the Select Committee on the Status of Water Trading in New South Wales. The inquiry is examining the origins, purpose, regulation and abuse of water trading, of the water trading market. It will also look into evidence of more, of market practices and their effects, including cornering, playing and fixing the market. The committee will also examine the effectiveness of water registration and disclosure, and the effects of water trading on the economy, communities and the environment. The committee will also hold a public forum here this evening from six P M till seven P M. This is an opportunity for community members to speak for up to five minutes and have their say about water trading and its effects. Numbers are limited. If you would like to participate in the forum but haven't already registered, please approach a member of the secretariat and provide your contact details to them. I acknowledge the Wurundjeri people, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. Today we will be hearing from a number of stakeholders, including members of the local community, community groups, irrigation companies and regulators. While we have witnesses with us in person, some will be appearing via video conference today. I thank everyone for making the time to give evidence to this important inquiry. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing has been broadcast live via the Parliament's website. The transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish about the committee's proceedings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in two thousand and eighteen. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and wanted more time to respond, they can take a question on notice. Written answers to questions taken on notice are to be provided within twenty-one days. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should do so through the committee staff. In terms of the audibility of today's hearing, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak into the microphone. And in this, in this particular case, you must switch it on and off. As we have a number of witnesses in person and via video conference, it may be helpful to identify who questions, sorry, who questions are directed to and who is speaking. And finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? I'd now like to welcome our first witnesses, Mr Greg Adamson, Mr Jamie Park and Ms Joy Boucher via teleconference. Are you there, Ms Boucher?
Yes.
Okay, maybe starting with...
Officially on Margaret.
Oh, officially you're Margaret. Okay, you're Margaret then. No, no problem. Could each witness, starting from my left with you, Mr Adamson, please state your full name and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation? Yeah, press it, it'll go red, that's it.
Gregory Michael Adamson, representing myself here as a community member. And I swear that the evidence that I'm now about to give by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Mr Park.
Ah yeah, Jamie Park from Dunlop, I'm a farmer from the Dunlop area. And I'm here just to, yeah, give evidence and I also, I swear, I swear the evidence now that's been given shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Mr Park, and Ms Boucher.
I, Margaret George Boucher, retires. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Maybe starting with Mr Adamson, would you like to make a short opening statement? No more than a couple of minutes?
That's fine.
You might pull the microphone towards you. Also, you too, Mr Park, please, yours with little heart here. Just pull it right up close, that's it.
Okay, so as the demographics of water ownership have changed, I believe it would be more equitable for the irrigation community if water delivery charges were paid by the water holders, not the landholders, as is the current situation. My name's Greg Adamson. I've held an interest as a bystander in the water market since my tertiary studies in agriculture during the nineteen nineties, when water trading was relatively new. As a new entrant to the industry, I, like my peers, were trained by many of the now retired industry leaders who developed the water trading principles and ideals with which the industry was established. It was my understanding water trading was introduced to facilitate the transfer of water from low productivity to high productivity crops. The aim was to increase water efficiency by putting a price on water and encouraging increased profitability throughout the Murray-Daly Basin. In my view, the fundamental objectives of the water trading were successful and water trading has achieved commercial objectives desired thirty or more years ago. In fact, most people within this region would have to agree that more profitable commodities are being produced as a result. We have witnessed water trading allow crops like cotton and grapes to flourish. However, just like all government policies, in the development of water trading, there are oversights that have become problematic over time and I believe need addressing right now. Unfortunately, in the early days, there was little understanding or foresight into how the water market would change. When water trading was introduced, it was assumed that irrigation landholders would remain the water owners. And for a long time, this was predominantly true. Over the years, this changed. Retired farmers and those exiting the industry sold their land but retained their water ownership. During droughts, bank managers asked farmers to sell water licenses to improve cash flow. Water speculators moved into the market. The demographic owning water changed. More people owned water without owning land and a trend I don't see changing. What has resulted is a problematic situation for irrigators. During drought, land-owning farmers who are trying to make an income from their land are forced to continue paying water delivery entitlements despite receiving no or reduced water supplies. They must do this at a time that their income drops significantly and many seek extra water from the water market. Water owners at this time sell their waters to the farmers who need temporary water supplies to finish their crops. And they do so for a large profit with no cost. This raises the question of equitability in a changing market. For a climate like Australia where water prices can increase dramatically because of water shortages, it would not, would it not make more sense that water holders who are making huge profits from water licenses be liable for the cost of delivery of water? Not the landholders with which, with reduced or no water supplies. I believe it would be more equitable for irrigation communities if water delivery charges were paid by the water holders, not landholders. Much in the same way, the owner of investment property or residential investment property pays rates to the community in which they invested.
Thank you, Mr, Mr Adamson. Mr Park or Ms Boucher, which of you would like to make an opening statement?
I'm making the opening statement.
Okay, please proceed.
Chair, Deputy and Committee Members, thank you for holding the inquiry. Water management acts ensures that water entitlements are our assets and can be independently traded, mortgaged or leased. This is contained by email. We are absolute owners of the water entitlements and delivery entitlements unless otherwise by court jurisdiction. Water entitlements and delivery entitlements included in purchase contracts. June O seven, delivery entitlements were issued and called to order entitlements at no cost. Attached to land, not order entitlement. A triple C recommendation outlawed an exit fee. Despite M I L repeatedly telling us exit fees were illegal, on the seventh of April and the fifteenth of May, O A, they changed policies for compulsory termination of delivery entitlements and paying fees. You could not have more D E's than water as you could not generate income to pay annual fees. Contrary to the members who had already sold more, there were sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-two without water. At the same time, M I L were discussing to put a parcel to sell fifty thousand water entitlements at five to six times the value. Then six weeks later, after the forced termination, M I L voted to remove the limit on the delivery entitlements on the landholders. One member was allowed to accumulate six and a half thousand. Now, the relevance to the terms of reference because of the historical policies and conduct of M I L, irrigators are still suffering from ongoing effects, struggling with stress, financial discrimination, denied fair competition and equitable trading. D E's are tradable, ineligible for efficiency water and its huge financial benefits. Mr Park, as a farmer wishing to continue farming with his sons, has been denied this. So, remove trading from infrastructure operators to prevent abuse and insider trading. There should be an independent regulator needed for transparency, accountability, accountability, efficiency, compliance and confidence and written orders. And to prevent conflict of interest, three directors voted on these two policies and their D E's protected from paying the fee. Directors also voted on the same day to transfer delivery entitlements to directors' apartments, no water. There was prior knowledge, a solicitor letter with the same policy that was brought in six months later. Three water brokers also had knowledge. So, an independent regulator can also regulate any abuse of annual carryover of water and parking, any abuse of government programs, any abuse of directors, governments and investors re-water trading. On the first of June O nine, you could have a thousand water entitlements mortgaged to the bank. Then M I L took seventeen percent on the first of July and you only had eight hundred and thirty delivery entitlements mortgaged to the bank. And we already have this water go and delivery entitlements go. And also, it should be checked into the continued taking of voluntary contribution in two thousand and two. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
I'm happy to borrow away. Good day, good day. Um, thank you. Can I, um, I might go to Mr Adamson, I think first. Mr Adamson, thank you for your submission. Thanks for the opening statement. So if there was, if there was just one thing that you wanted this committee to recommend, what, what would it be and why?
Uh, the main concern that I have is that we have an increase in people who are not actively engaged within the agriculture industry, holding water. Which, for this region, leads to a draining of profits and a transfer of funds that could be coming to our community and staying within our community into other markets. Ideally, that is fine and I don't want to see that changed. Um, what I'd like to see is that they contribute back to the costs, that the real costs that are continued to be paid by this community. So while some of that money is leaving our community, as investors and we're profiting from the sale of the water to them, so that that money, so the capital price is coming back to our region, the ongoing cost of the delivery and infrastructure upgrades needs to be shared by all, not those that are just living in our community.
Can I just ask, sorry? I think my microphone's working. Sorry, Mr Adamson. Can I just ask, I just wanted, in relation to some of those changing demographics that you mentioned in your statement and in response to my colleagues' questions, I wondered if you were able to quantify that at all for us? You know, provide any kind of statistics around that change and, you know, give us a sense of the, as much as you can, sort of the amounts of water entitlements or money, if you're able to, that are now held outside of the community?
Um, I've looked into this issue as a citizen, so I don't have access to information held within government departments without doing freedom of information requests and that information is difficult to ascertain. Anecdotally, I could give some evidence. In two thousand and two, I went to every single farm in Griffith with plantation surveys. I found out what they were growing, what they were producing, how much water they were using. And then in two thousand and five, I came back through with Australian Bureau of Agriculture and Resource Economics and went through their books for production details. Of the farmers that I originally interviewed and spoke with, I've kept a relationship with quite a number of them over the years. Very few of the farmers who that I was speaking with have been in a position where they'd like to sell the water. They're more than happy to remove themselves from the ownership of land. But quantifying it would be very difficult for me as a community member.
Um, can I just, Mr Adamson, just before, I'm going to ask Mr Park the same question, that would be the one thing, but before I do, Mr Adamson, the non-landholding participants in the water trading, uh, you were talking about the, the costs that you as a landholder have got to make or required to make, but other participants don't make. Can you just maybe detail a bit more of those for the committee, please?
Um, so I own dry holding land. I have little interest in owning irrigation water. So I'm coming at this from a different perspective. Um, with my dry holding land, I'll be paying rates, stock, stock fees to relevant to London, sorry, local land board. Um, water farmers will also pay a delivery fee for the water that they consume. So there's an annual metered fee. If we break it down, a farmer and, sorry, Mr Park, maybe best to explain it. The water owner has a delivery entitlement to their property, which they must have in order to receive their licensed allocation of water. So they pay a fee for the delivery of the water, but they also own a right for the delivery of the water as well as the license. Where I'm specifically narrowing my focus to was just simply the water ownership. So the ownership of the water, not the delivery, but I'd like to see a mechanism changed and that would require your bureaucrats to go back and do some research on how. Um, where those that own the water are paying the cost that the farmer would, not the farmer.
Mr Park, you, you, you agree with Mr Adamson? Uh, yeah, I do. I do agree with him there. Um, yeah, with, with a lot of that. Um, yeah, my, my main issue here today really was with, um, you know, I don't mind the delivery fees, but I do think, yeah, Mr Adamson's on the go with that because it doesn't matter who pays them, as long as they're paid, but people that own the water probably should be paying them more than anything. Um, but getting back to the main reason why I'm here today was because back thirteen years ago, when I decided to sell my water, uh, Mrs Boucher will, Boucher this as well, uh, you know, we, we were mistreated when we had to pay an exit fee, okay, to terminate these delivery entitlements. Um, and what, yeah, bothers me more than anything is to think that directors and people with prior knowledge, back when I sold my water, put their water um, into what they call a non-landholders account. So, most farmers, if you're a landholder, um, by even calling that account a non-landholders account, um, uh, uh, was, um, yeah, really, um, you know, uh, how would I say it? It was just, yeah, I mean, people, you just wouldn't think that you could put it in there. It'd be more for the outside person like a lawyer or just anyone, you know? Um, guys like yourselves or politicians or whatever that had water would put it in a non-landholders account, not a farmer, because a farmer is a landholder. So, um, yeah, it was, um, it was, I think, I think the wrong way they done it and also, um, for directors of the company to put their water in it, okay? And then sell their water off and get to keep the amount of money. Um, and the delivery entitlements was, yeah, I think it's disgusting. I really do and I think it needs to be looked into seriously. Um, it's put me through, yeah, a real battle over the last thirteen years thinking that, um, you know, how can these people vote for fellow farmers to pay this fee? And they didn't pay themselves and they hid their water in these non-landholding accounts.
Mr Adamson, um, you made a point earlier talking about non-agricultural traders in the water market. Um, what do you think the effect of non-agricultural traders, maybe you can answer this, Ms Boucher and Mr Park as well? Uh, their effect on the market, on the water market for the, as far as efficiency of allocation is concerned?
From a general perspective and watching what's happening in the industry, they're actually an important factor within the market. They're allowing for the transfer of water from low, keeping to the ideals of what water trading is about. They're allowing for the transfer of water from crops that were consuming, so initially the idea was that there was um, rice paddocks that were being used, which weren't suitable for rice production. Uh, they were chewing through twenty megalitres a hectare of water. The ideal market at the time was to produce water that would produce rice using less than twelve megalitres a hectare. So going back into the nineteen nineties where a lot of the ideology was developed. Less productive farmers were rewarded to exit the industry and that took place. Farmers who were having difficulties or there was structural readjustment in the market were able to exit the industry. There were some that left, um, and did sell their water. And the banks that were putting the pressure on for the sale of the water also led to the water becoming available to people to facilitate the transfer of water into different commodities. So their function is important, their need is important. Um, but I think where we're having difficulties in this region is that all the profits from this region are leaving to those water holders.
Are leaving to the non-landwater holders and leaving the community?
Yeah, so the profits leave the community to non-landwater holders, which is, um, again, we've profited in this region. We've seen billions of dollars come into this region in value of water trades. So new money that came in to facilitate the exit of farmers from the region who were struggling, who weren't profitable. We watched investment in this region. Um, I would just simply like to see, one key adjustment is that they contribute to our communities in the upkeep of the infrastructure that is necessary for the water.
Well, that's your main point, that, that non-landholders should be contributing to the delivery system costs?
Yes.
Okay. Mr Park, have you got any comments to make? I think Ms Boucher in her opening statement talked about you having a generational need for change.
Uh, well, no, really, um, uh, for me at the moment, all, all, my main, my main thing is here, I'd like to be put back to where I was thirteen years ago. I would like, I would like to have my delivery entitlements back and my money back and all costs involved in, 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 in what's happened to me in all this time to be mistreated. I mean, for, for them to be able to change rules and then six weeks later change rules back again to suit themselves, um.
And you're talking about M I L?
Yes, I am.
Can I just ask it, just to follow up to that, when you're saying they're able to change the rules, um, and then change them back six, six weeks later, or change them differently, what, how do they change the rules without, like, what, what, what's the structure in terms of, how can they change the rules around, around water trading so easily? And what it seems to be so undemocratically according to your submission?
Well, they've gone into votes and, um, yeah, I believe, uh, I believe those that had a conflict of interest,
Come to you in a minute, Ms Boucher.
Those that had a conflict of interest in it should not have, um, should not have voted for these changes. And we can pass it on to Mrs Boucher. Now she can probably help you out more with it.
You want, um,
Yes, please.
You want to comment on that question? Or do you need it again, Ms Boucher?
Now, I'd like to comment on that thing. Um, and this is why I've asked the irrigation companies for order of it. Um, when the first resolution to the charge of policy was made, um, it was, um, made on the seventh and then on the eighth, the decision was brought in. It wasn't an actual board meeting because I spoke to a few of the directors and they weren't present. Um, and the rule was brought in, but then they brought that rule in saying everybody who sold water had to terminate. Figures show everybody did not terminate because there should have been about thirteen million dollars in termination fees. It was only eight and a half million. Also, then, after bringing that policy in, which lasted for fifteen months, in May, they also brought a transfer rule policy in, which was exactly the same wording as the charge policy resolution. But on that same day in May, they brought in that you could have more delivery entitlements on your farm than your total farm water balance. On your total farm water balance, you cannot deliver any more water than, say, a thousand, right? But then they, they took the limit that people could have more. So they were making fif, for fifteen months, they made some members pay the termination fee to give delivery entitlements back. But then they were allowing other people to give those delivery entitlements, which contradicted exactly what they said on, on the day. And as I say, not everybody had to terminate because the figures definitely don't show that everybody terminated because the actual amount of money that was paid in termination fees. Now, that eight and a half million dollars should go back to the actual people that had to pay. And as I say, it's affecting everybody now because, for example, June twenty-two, delivery entitlements allow you to get efficiency money, right, which is last month, uh, June, sorry, was six percent. Now, with that, but if you haven't got delivery entitlements, you can't get it and that's another anomaly. Where they say that it's because of the financial contribution that delivery entitlements are made, you're entitled to that sixty percent. Like some years it's been about twelve percent. I'm only going by this year. And it's a lot of money for the people who haven't been allowed to get. This is where some people, there's no equitability in the trading and these things have got to be addressed. People put back to where they are so that they're exactly the same as their neighbour, who didn't have to terminate. After the A triple C brought their rules in in September O nine, you couldn't compulsory terminate. But the New South Wales Government was mentoring force the Murray-Daly Basin Agreement because each contracting party were mentoring forces. And, um, no matter who we got in touch, touch with, everybody just passed the buck and said, no, it's not A triple C, it's not New South Wales, it's not INRA, it's not, anyone was gravely concerned, but it was a New South Wales problem, not ours. And then basically, that's why you need one regulator and, and each irrigation company. And I know ours isn't the, M I L isn't the only irrigation company that's got a lot of hassles. They just make policies on the run. Like, how can you, six weeks later, particularly after, so, from eight, June O seven, when delivery entitlements were handed out, to April O eight, sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-two water entitlements were sold and didn't have to terminate, but then all of a sudden they decided that for the next fifteen months, everybody had to terminate, which they did, but some people had to terminate and pay the fee. But what's the name? Not everybody had to pay it. It, it's just so selective and as Jamie mentioned about the prior knowledge, that it's, something's got to be done so these irrigated companies, and there should only be fifty percent directors' members and sixty percent who are, are non-members. So therefore it can be regulated properly. I, I think there are ways with irrigation companies personally, um, after the experience we've had with them. But there are, there are other examples I can give of what has happened with the irrigation companies because they just run rupture show over, over farmers. And it's the farmer's company. And it's the farmer's company.
We might just, we might just move on to another part of your submission, Ms. Boucher. You talk about returning water to the land. What do you mean by that?
Well, originally, in ninety five, the New South Wales Government was the first government to separate water from land. And that, that has allowed investors to come in. And people purchased like the non-holding water account, which has been discussed. Then that is, these investors don't need the money for their livelihoods. They do not put it back into the communities that need it. And what's the name, um, that's why, if, if it goes back to it should be for environment and for the land. And that way, that would eliminate investors pushing the money out because they don't need, need it straight away. For some of their water entitlements and, and when there's not a full, um, a lot of water.
So would, would you?
The more money they make, the better off they are and.
Would you characterize the current water trading circumstances as an effective water allocation mechanism?
Um, sorry.
I said, would you characterize the current trading arrangements as an effective form of water allocation mechanism to farmers, for example? Are they getting it at a price they can afford, for example? Are they getting it when they need it? Are you during drought?
I would say you're probably best to ask Jamie that, but I personally don't think they do because, as I say, they, they don't have the finances to actually, because an investor doesn't have to worry about budgeting and all the costs. No, they just, they've got their money invested in it and they want to make as much money out of it. But farmers need it and they have got a lot of costs. I think Jamie is probably best to answer that.
What's your experience, Mr. Park, in relation to that question?
Um, oh, well, at the moment, I think while there's plenty of water around, um, the water prices have dropped. Um, but there, actually, over, over the last probably couple of years or eighteen months sort of thing, I think things have sort of lined off a little bit. But even so, when we see a lot of water, uh, and, and there's been a lot of, um, you know, a lot of commotion over it all. Where dams have got X amount, like a fair bit of water in them and we're watching water running out of the ocean.
But isn't the true test of a water mechanism not now when there's plenty of surplus water? I think, isn't it the true test of how it allocates it when you're in drought, for example? Isn't that really what it's all about?
Well, I think when it's in drought, it gets, it gets, like, I mean, when it's, when it's in drought, if it's physically not there, it's not there, is it? Like, even, even, even so with high-security holders, high-security water. I mean, that will be the real test to see when the water and the rivers dry up once again, which one day they will. I hope they don't, but they will. And that's where, that's where we'll see it, uh, once again. But I think to see water, um, as we've seen over the years, um, where it's gone out and flushed out in the ocean, where water could have been used. That's, I think, manipulating the water market because if the water's there, uh, it's cheaper. And if it's not there, it's dearer. So the more water that disappears out of the system or out in the forests and wherever, wherever else they want to put it in the environment and all the rest of it, um, that puts the water price up too. And sometimes I don't think the forests need as much water as what they're getting.
Can I find that question, Rob?
Yeah, please.
Just, so just to very much simplify that, I'm relative new to this issue. When there is a time when you need more water, either because of drought or because you want to put in a new crop, what is the process, like, how easy is the process for you to get that water? And what are the main hurdles, I guess, that would make it almost too hard or, or not worth the, well, give you effort?
So, yeah, well, you've got to just work out what, what you're growing, what it's worth up against, um, the water usage and whatnot to, to how much you can afford to buy that water. Or if you own water, some farmers decide to sell their water. Um, but most try to grow something with it that's, you know, and everyone's chasing different things. Um, it's like these almonds around at the moment. I mean, there's more and more of those getting grown, which effectively later on, we're going to probably see once a lot of those trees grow um, and need more water, uh, that's going to manipulate the water market once again. And, and that's going to be a huge worry, not just now, but I would say in four or five years' time. When, when they start to produce the fruit, um, that's when you're going to see, you know, real demands for water. And a lot of these other crops like rice and different things that you're growing, well, I don't know how they're going to even afford to grow them. Because those trees, they will pay, you know, up to two thousand dollars a megaliter for water to keep them alive and they've got to keep them alive. So no one can really compete with that. So, yeah, um, but it's, it's hard to say as far as with the water that goes out the system. Um, or some people think it's wasted. I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but like when it goes out into the forest and all that, we think, well, it's just flooded the forest, why flood it again? We want the water. And that's putting a demand on the, on, on, on the whole system where we want, we want the water to grow our crops. Yet why flood the forest again when they, you know, naturally don't need to be flooded that many times? And it's like sometimes people, I don't know, is it because people have got interest, investments in water where they're getting all this money? Um, because the percentage of water's not in the system to be sold. So that then, it's like fixing the market price. I think that needs to be addressed and looked at closely too.
Ms. Boucher, you made some comments in your submission about water register and delivery entitlement register. Um, do you want to comment on that? I note that you talk about the attempt in the, in the lower house to get a register up some time ago, which failed.
Yeah, well, I think particularly they include delivery entitlements because they now are tradable often. Um, and they're tradable because they can be, for those who haven't got them, transfer them temporarily. So that they don't have to pay double or three, um, because there's a tax or fee on it. And, um, there needs to be a register and it failed in, um, when it was put forth because they, some of the irrigation companies said about, um, privacy. But the actual water, the share register has all the details. The name of the farmer, the names and how many shares they've got. And so therefore there is no reason why there can't be a seasonally accessible public register for water entitlements and delivery entitlements. And that would deal away with a lot of trans- like a transparent because at the moment it's not. Who knows how many, M I L, um, water entitlements they've got? The M I O, how many they've got? Um, if, if it's public register, anybody can access it. The same as we can all access the share register. There's got to be accountability and there's got to be transparency brought into the whole, look, it's a debacle. Because the way it's going, it's so much stress for farmers. One in ten farmers have their lives. Those statistics are shocking. Marriage breakdowns. Out of the three of us, there's one marriage breakdown. Because it, it's, it's their livelihoods, farmers' livelihoods. And talking about, Jamie, when he was talking about costs and everything, you should see the actual price schedule. What the irrigators have to, we're no longer farmers, we retired. But the price schedule that the irrigation farmers have to pay before they even get to put their copies. I will send you copies. It, it's just, and that's why an investor doesn't have to pay any amount. They don't have to pay delivery entitlements. They don't have to pay any of the costs of these, an outbreak cost. And then like causes, the price causes, as I say, because we're not in it, it, it is just so complex. And I, I hadn't had heard of that. How much water do they got to pay before they actually to put a crop in and go from there?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Boucher. I just.
Definitely needs to be a register to let people know who, who has got them. Whether they're directors, government bodies, um, investors, overseers. There's a lot of rumors. I don't know for sure. I know, I know there needs to be a register so the transparency and accountability can be there for everybody to see.
Thank you.
And privacy is not an excuse. As I say, the share register, I gather, the same with the share register for M I O. Um, it's the same. I don't know, but the share register for M I L has a number, your, um, name or company, your.
Uh, Ms. Boucher, we might, yeah, we, we've got your point. Thank you. We might just move on.
Thank you. Uh, I, I just was hoping, um, the witnesses and maybe it's addressed to, to more than one. Uh, quite a few of the submissions, including the submission prepared by, um, Ms. Boucher and, um, Mr. Park and Ms. Pratt. You mentioned that, um, the I I I, I I O boards, um, have an issue with insider trading and that insider trading occurs. Could you just explain, uh, what, what you mean by this specifically in terms of the water trading market? And then what, uh, solutions need to be put in place in your opinion to address that issue? Might maybe go to Mr. Park first, if you. Okay.
Ms. Boucher?
Oh, okay. All right. Well, that, that's where I said about conflict of interest. Um, with the directors voting, but six months prior to bringing the policy in, in April, there was a solicitor's letter. So therefore for that six months, people knew, right? A water broker, who both of us have spoken to, told us that he put his water in the water entitlement only account. And therefore, and he'd also spoken to that solicitor. And he didn't have to pay the termination fee. He told his clients to do it or advised his clients. But, and you see, they didn't get it in in time, right? Now, the thing is, if there's a regulator that sets all the policies, then this sort of thing can't happen. Now, directors, and obviously they would have known if the policy was out there to a solicitor, why should a solicitor know? And members don't. I personally spoke to M I L the day before I was selling my, before the policy came in. No mention of it to, so it was only to a select member. But that would eliminate if policies are set by somebody else and the companies are audited regularly, then any abuse can be eliminated. Now, the, the three directors didn't do anything wrong because they did it before the policy came in on the seventh of April. But they should not have voted for other members to suffer something that they were eliminated from. Because they probably had insider knowledge. And if it was out there six months earlier, the figures for the non-member account, virtually an obscene copy of these things to you guys already, went up between oh seven and oh eight, which means those people did not have to terminate their delivery entitlements. And I think Jamie mentioned, non, non-member, non-landholding account. If you're a member and you've got land, why would you put it in that account?
All right. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Boucher. Mr. Park, thanks very much for coming. Um, and Mr. Anderson, thank you. Um, none of you have taken any questions on notice, so at this point we'll end this part of the session. Thank you very much for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your contribution.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right. We can, yep, we, we can. I'd like to welcome you, Mr. Perotti, and you, Mr. Pokinghorn. Thanks very much for coming. Um, I might ask you to swear either an oath or an affirmation, starting with you, Mr. Perotti. Thank you, Mr. Pokinghorn.
I, Lloyd Pokinghorn, solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Would you like to make a small, a short opening statement, Mr. Perotti?
Yeah, sorry. Um, yeah, it's been, it's a little low in volume and a little hard of hearing, so I'm sorry.
If you pull the mic closer to you.
Yep. Um, so firstly, thank you all for coming, uh, to talk to us today about uh, water trading. It is a very, uh, serious issue in this region, which is one of the largest irrigation areas, uh, in Australia with, uh, Griffith's the gross regional product of over two billion per annum. Uh, we are a significant, significant contributor to the Australian economy and we feel that the current water trading, uh, regulations are not entirely suited to, uh, be an equitable, free and open market. Uh, I've made, uh, eight fundamental points. One, uh, we would say that we recommend, we support and recommend all the A C C recommendations. Two is we need to, we believe there needs to be a drought clause, uh, on capped border volumes. Three, uh, we believe there should be a no-trade carryover. Four, user payers conveyance loss, which means water brought upstream, uh, there should be an on-cost to the buyer downstream to, to subsidize for the losses which are burdened on the upstream users. Uh, five is more managed water, increased Byron Duck Dam and established Lake Cooler for en route storage. Six, water register, uh, transparent, easily accessible and free. Seven, water, environmental water allocation for Lake Wangon, that's the local issue with, uh, significant motor neurone disease risk and, um, blue green algae issues. Griffith has eight times the national level of motor neurone disease directly linked to blue green algae from Lake Wangon. Uh, so extremely serious issue locally. Uh, and eight, New South Wales legislate to block any further federal buyback.
Thank you, Mr. Pokinghorn.
Uh, good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming. Uh, water trading is such a, a fundamental issue to our regions. Um, I'm here representing Speak Up For Water as the deputy chair. Um, I grew up at a town called Mullambein, I'm a third-generation mixed irrigator. Uh, I've also currently run a newspaper advocating for our region of Northern Victoria and Southern New South Wales. Under the Murray Darling Basin Plan, we had noble intentions of actually helping the Murray in restoring balance within our regions. Social, economic and environmental. Unfortunately, what I've witnessed in the last sort of fifteen years has been the destruction of our river, the Murray. Uh, the wiping out of family farmers, uh, the destruction of on-farm ecosystems, which were essentially productive wetlands that had a, an economic and an ecological benefit. Uh, quite frequently in the basin plan, we talk about, uh, saving the environment, but they only talk about publicly owned environment, not the broader environment. And now we see with water trading, external competitors, whether they be foreign or domestic corporates or, uh, financial institutions operating in our water market with a resource that is scarce, that has a greater benefit to our land and our community and our people, not just an economic bottom line. And in the delivery and moving of water for water trading, we also see horrendous impacts to the, the river. to the, the river system. Uh, we see third party impacts as far as undermining reliability. Uh, we see the change in characteristics of water by parking high security water on low security or general security licences. And we also see the exceeding of the natural constraints of the river in delivering both permanent and temporary water trades, uh, further downstream to permanent plantings and other ventures.
Mr. Polkinghorn, is there anything good about what's going on at the moment?
I suppose those making, uh, plenty of money without having to pick up a shovel or, or strain a fence are probably pretty happy with the current situation. Um, yeah, from what I witness, there is, uh, a dramatic shift to, uh, being less balanced than we were previously. Previously, we had a situation in which water was able to be trade within geographical locality. So those who are able to produce better or had a different crop type could actually capitalise on the, the season, whether it be a good season or a poor season. But now we've sort of thrown out climate variability and we're trying to grow permanent plantings and trade and deliver consistent volumes down rivers that actually need ebbs and flows and high flows and low flows.
Uh, Mr. Polkingham, Mr. Polkinghorn, thank you. In your submission, you say that Victoria has made a significant positive step forward in delivering on public expectations and legislative requirements. Could you just talk through with the committee, uh, why, what Victoria's done that you see as the significant step?
Uh, Victoria have identified that the movement of vast quantities of water is impacting their, their natural assets. So the Goldwyn River has seen massive destruction, uh, in delivering water further downstream for, for essentially new permanent plantings. We have, um, there's like sixty-five thousand hectares of permanent plantings, almonds and things that are going in further down the system. Now, those crops actually require huge volumes of water. A crop like almonds will use more water than rice or cotton. And they require the same volume of water year in, year out. So you're getting this perpetual demand, um, so you're running the system more ineffi- inefficiently because you're delivering water further down the system. Um, and so Victoria recognise that they're destroying the river system in trying to meet these needs. And so they've put restrictions on trade. Um, so currently, there is a huge pool of water downstream, like that is affecting the natural assets, so the river channel. But it's also affecting allocations to farmers because despite being in the two thousand and four National Water Initiative and the two seven seven Water Act, it talks about conversions in the delivery of water. So if I have a megaliter of water up the top of the system and I buy a megaliter of water down the system, the conversion rate shouldn't be one to one because there's a delivery loss in evaporation and that seepage. But as it stands currently, we ignore those parts of the legislation and we convert one to one. And the extra water required to run the system is picked up by those who get their water allocated last. So in New South Wales, it's sort of general security licence holders, so conveyance order to run the river increases and the people on the bottom pick up the tab for those trading water and shifting away.
Working, so I'm just awkwardly leaning over my colleague here. Um, I just wanted to firstly pick up on something you said there and then I have another question. It, just in relation to the impact of the current arrangement on the river itself. You sort of mentioned that, but I just wanted a little bit more information. I mean, presumably it's sort of degrading the banks and those sorts of things. So, you know, and, and what, what is the impact on the rivers of the current arrangements of the, of water delivery?
Um, so there's a huge range of impacts. So I'm based at Kunrook Barim and we've witnessed between seven to eight metres of the riverbank being eroded in the last ten years.
It's slumpy.
Hmm.
Yeah, well, it, it's the complete annihilation of the bank. So, um, our banks traditionally there were sort of like a forty-five degree slope and they had, you know, generations of organic matter and, and biodiversity and stuff that grew in the bank and stabilised it with the higher flows. We start to see notching, which is like a, a line coming in. And then it sort of rips that out and then the top of the bank starts falling in and you start ending up with these vertical banks. Um, so that's affecting both public and private assets. So people are losing fences and pumps and people are losing parts of their lawn and these sprinkler systems in Barim that you can see are sort of two metres out into the river. Um, you know, the wharf at Barim, the boardwalk that the community actually, you know, built themselves, uh, won awards for. They've had to put in, I think it was like twelve hundred tonnes of rock to stabilise it, um, upstream. And then we also have forests getting destroyed. So we've got platypus habitats and kingfish habitats and, you know, all these great old red gum trees that hold cultural significance. And we're essentially hydraulically land clearing the Murray in delivering these, um, huge volumes. And I'm talking like hundreds of kilometres, there'd be four hundred kilometres between us and the Barma choke. And they, they talk about the damage in the Barma choke, but we're so far downstream and we're witnessing the same sort of impacts. And yet it doesn't seem to rate as, um, any level importance. But I think it's schedule three, the two thousand and seven Water Act says water trading can be restricted if it's actually damaging integrity of the river or causing environmental damage. But, um, yeah, for whatever reason, we don't implement the rules and the safeguards that are in place.
In that clause, is that what the Victorians have enacted, uh, uh, that they've implemented that or acted on that section?
Um, I think they've just gone for a state based water trading limit, um, down the river to protect it. But there is actual legislation at a national level that we could enact or should enact.
The next question that I wanted to ask, um, uh, to either of you is, Mr., um, Parodi, you mentioned in your, um, opening statement and in your submission, the reference to the A triple C's inquiry and their findings. I mean, they absolutely found that the current water trading system had serious dysfunctionalities and irregularities. And they recommended legislation at the national level, um, to address that enhanced, um, insider trading provisions, et cetera. What do you think are the most important elements, um, of that response? If there was a sort of key top priority things, um, that we did look to legislate around in order to appro- improve the efficiency of the market, what would they be? And, and Mr. Polkinghorn, of course, if you had any views about top priority legislative or regulatory responses, that'd be useful as well.
Um, it's, it's a very long response, uh, from the A triple C, so, uh, and there's a lot of recommendations there. Um, I think that, uh, the issues around transparency in trading and, you know, zero purchase sales, their parking, uh, rules, uh, and I believe just the need for the whole trading market to be more transparent, equitable, far more like what, you know, a normal share market would be like, uh, is necessary. I think there's significant gaming of the market, um, particularly by non-irrigator groups, by financial organisations. Um, there's some, there's some berserk activity going on between above and below the choke with over a hundred dollars per mag difference at any given time and the gaming of moving water from one region to the other. Then the, the, the whole cap system is, is being absolutely rotted. Um, the caps on this region, for example, uh, you can talk to any water trader anywhere and I'll tell you a way around the cap at any time. So the caps virtually are non-existent because there's, there's manipulative ways to transfer water from one area to another, uh, then to avoid, um, having to comply to those regulations on caps, et cetera. So, uh, you know, ultimately, I suppose what I'm saying from the A triple C recommendations is that the actual structural, uh, system of trade, uh, lacks due diligence, lacks, uh, it, it, it lacks proper rules and regulations and transparency. And that would come right down to, um, the, the actual need for a water register as well. And, and that, that's actually a legislated, uh, lead, that, that need that was supposed to be in place. And every time that's been raised, you know, we get a pushback saying, oh, yeah, well, you can look that up if you know the, um, if you know the person's trading number and you pay a fee to a very difficult process and being able to access that. I believe that this should be absolutely open and especially to vested interests, um, people involved in water and politicians and parliamentarians and anyone in office, actually, anyone who's involved in, you know, the hundreds of different bureaucratic levels of water management should absolutely, uh, and fairly show with their involvement in the water market. So I'd say that, you know, from, from the A triple C recommendations, they're my, uh, hot picks. Um, but I think that what, what, where they've missed is what Lloyd was just talking about as well, which is with this transmission losses and the carryover losses which are borne by the upstream general security holders. So one meg that gets bought in Griffith gets bought to, say, Riverland. It takes three mags to deliver in con- in conveyance. That three mags comes out of the allocation of general security in, in this region. And our, our allocations have gone from, uh, above ninety percent average to below thirty percent at start of season. Right now, uh, we're in flood and our general security allocation is forty-one percent. So there is no logic that has, is an exact, a direct consequence of, uh, the basin plan and water trading, uh, and the rules and systems. So I think there needs to be some significant adjustment in being equitable in the way that these water moves.
Water and blowering, I come from Chiman, water and blowering right now, trust me.
Um, yeah, I share many of the same as, uh, Paul's thoughts on it. Transparency is a big one. Um, the two thousand and four National Water Initiative and two thousand and seven Water Act actually calls for a national water register that is open and transparent. The, the federal government, I believe, at Senate estimates, mentioned that they spent thirty million dollars in creating one to drop, um, in, it was twenty-ten or twenty-eleven. So there seems to be a real reluctance, um, to actually have open, transparent, uh, water ownership details. Because when you're operating in a market with a, a limited supply, like the, the potential for insider trading or for huge economic gains is, is endless. People refer to the water market as like a financial market, but money's sort of endless, but water's not. And the decisions that policymakers make as far as managing water resources can affect the supply and the volume of water that's available. Um, I had a dairy farmer near me and he, uh, had to buy temporary water just to grow some feed for his cattle. And the seller of the water was the New York Police Department Superannuation Fund. And I remember going to meetings in Victoria where the Victorian government were encouraging farmers to sell their permanent water and, and rely on the temporary market. But, but now the floodgates are open, like we have, you know, international interests who are trading in our water. And, you know, in a, a wet year, it's not as dramatic. But in a dry year and the ability to park and alter the characteristics of water. So within our system, we had different water licences. So a high security licence was really reliable, but you didn't have the ability to carry over that water into the next season because you were basically guaranteed that allocation the next year. And so carryover was a product for lower security licences. So because they got the water last, they were able to sort of have some insurance going into the next season. But, but under the current system, high security, uh, water holders can get their entitlement. They can actually take that water and they can pay someone and park it on a general security licence. So that impacts, uh, water as stored in the dam. And it also impacts how it appears to bureaucrats and M D B A. Because they go, oh, there's, there's quite a lot of water in the dam, people don't seem to be using it. So, you know, I don't know what you're complaining about, but they might not be food and fibre producers. They might be the bloke on the other side of the country sitting on his laptop or the other side of the world going, hang on, if I hold my water, so this year waters in our region down to forty-five dollars a meg temporary. But if he holds it to a dry time, well, he might get three hundred dollars a meg or seven hundred dollars a meg. And the communities that rely on irrigation and the input, like we've lost footy clubs. The school I went to, they're less than fifty percent of the students. M D B A's own report, we lost seventy percent of the employment in the Walkall Irrigation District. So we lost about fifty percent of the water through buybacks and now we've got water traders and all the rest of it. So the actual water that gets delivered in our footprint would be less, much less than fifty percent. Because we've had a, we've had a fall in reliability. So our yield on entitlement, we used to have about an eighty-three percent average, um, through management and the decisions that have been taken, conveyance, all the rest of it, we're down below fifty percent. So you take out fifty percent of our award with buybacks, you take out fifty percent of our reliability, we're back to a quarter. You put in these external influences of trading and holding water, what are we left with? Probably twenty percent. So that's reflected in our on-farm ecosystem. So we had like Australasian bittens and stuff that would come and nest in our rice crops. We used to have bird days on our farms, we had Murray Darling pythons, all these things like southern belfrog. No environmental impact study done before water recovery was taking part in our region. And it's insult to injury because they'll do all this song and dance about putting environmental water in a forest near me. Quite a tiny footprint that hasn't seen a bitten in the last, I've spoken to people who've been there eighty years and have never seen a bitten in that forest. And they, they crow about, you know, all these press releases about, oh, we're saving the bitten. I go, well, up the road, you just removed a hundred thousand hectares of crops that supported bittens and also had an environmental and economic benefit. And then you're celebrating about, you know, one percent. You've, yeah, not an equal trade, it, yeah, it makes no sense to me, so.
So basically, what, what I'm taking out of, out of all this, apart from the, the, uh, damage to, to the ecology and so forth, but basically what I'm taking is, it seems to be a lot of, may I say, predatory behaviour, which is encouraged by the current system. And which is putting farmers at a, at a, obviously distinct disadvantage. Is, is that what I'm taking out of it? And that's from hearing from, what you guys are saying and from the previous witnesses.
Yeah, absolutely. And there's a disparity in the, the time, the computer technology and all the rest to capitalise on inter valley trades and all these other things. I liken it to a, a transport company. So if I had a transport company and they rely on diesel every month, if you actually allowed someone to come and trade that diesel before they got it or restrict the supply, like there'd be an outrage. So these farmers actually rely on their water, they've been there multi-generational, um, and all these impacts, you know, they're, they're carrying stock, they're trying to make their bank repayments. They're trying to put their kids through school. And we've got people who have no attachment to the land or the community who's been able to buy the water, hold the water, who are able to actually.
It's just about money, it's just about money, that's all it is.
And they develop relationships with those in power. Like there is so many, um, you know, I wouldn't call them, uh, would, yeah, anyway, they develop relationships with, uh, the water companies, with the M D B A, with state water resources. Because knowledge is power as far as allocations and what's coming down the pipeline or how they're going to use environmental water or the ability for people to park, you know, their allocations in environmental water accounts, like that has happened in New South Wales. So, you know, there's so much that's hidden. And people are just trying to farm and produce and get on with life. And yet there's all these external influences taking away a critical resource that, one, you're battling the weather. But now we're battling people with limitless resources and time who are devoting their lives just to making money out of something we rely on.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, we heard from an earlier witness, he wanted to go back thirteen years. He also spoke a little bit about, I guess, the promise around the original from the M D B A. What, it seems like there was a bit of optimism at a time. What, you know, what were you told had turned out not to be true or what were you lied about or, or what's changed that optimism?
Um, so the, the basin plan was sold as a, um, a balanced plan based on best available silent, uh, science with a triple bottom line of environmental, economical and community outcomes. And we haven't seen any of that. We've seen a complete disregard for, uh, community input. And that's affecting, so that's been affecting our, our rivers, like our on-farm environments, um, and our communities. And it's wiping out all three. And these, these are quite sustainable industries. So we had really tight regulation as far as the crops you could grow, uh, the limits of how much water per hectare you could grow. We had requirements around salinity, used to have soils drilled and tested. Now, under the basin plan, we've removed all those safeguards. So right now, you could go to Boundary Bend and you could see massive almond plantations. And I can take you to. And I can take you to a road there where a council road is under salt water, because the water table is now above the ground. And so we're developing land that the uh Productivity Commission pushed during the basin plan for the. Highest value return per megaliter. Now, when they said that, they didn't put any caveats on deliverability, soil suitability, you know, what if the highest return per megaliter is trading water? Like, it doesn't actually have any balance or any science behind it, so we have huge, I exit workers, and diesel mechanic when I left school and. They were pushing out, um, you know, there was all these dry land farming enterprises in the mally and they're they're now permanent plantings, they're now. New irrigation areas below the constraints and there's a natural huge salt shelf under there. So they're they're watering the almonds on sand and so excess water goes to the other water table that comes up. You can get on Google Earth or Six Maps and you can actually see the mally scrub and the plantations dying in the lower reaches where they're accessing the salt water. Now, they're four kilometres from the Murray and if you've ever done salinity at school, salt water actually traverses on a. A set level, and so they're four Ks from the Murray, and so all that excess salt is going to go into the Murray, so. We have a basin plan that is trying to save the Murray from salt and having dilution flows. And yet we're moving production onto unsuitable country that is exacerbating the problem. You know, there is just so many things that have been talked about, people in our community actually wrote a book, I think it was High and Dry in two thousand and six. And actually talked about the risks of of the way we were going and the problems that would occur and we're seeing that, um. Yeah, it's all coming home to roost and and we find it really frustrating, the division that seems to be pushed at a national level. About irrigators versus the environment. So most of the people I grew up with, irrigators who loved their environment, they were multi-generational, um they actually. Understood and observed what was happening on their land and their communities, my next door neighbour was actually. Um breeding the bushstone curlew, he um it was endangered in our region, he was a rice farmer and he loved birds and his uncle and father loved birds. So he started breeding birds and he actually had more success than the authorities trying to breed birds, till they got to a point where they still. Stopped him from breeding, we said, no, you're actually going to overpopulate our region with this bird. Now, these are people who don't get paid to do it, they actually just love their communities and their environment and. Yeah, I think the basin plan has sort of thrown out a lot of localism, um we used to have Land and Water Management Acts and Environmental Champions and Land Care. And you'd actually have local on-ground uh water delivery specialists working with landholders and the community, um. And now we've moved all that up further away, whether it be Sydney or Canberra and, you know, we're along far west from Sydney to uh. It's like seven seats west of the divide.
You you've touched on it a couple of times then and earlier and also in your your statement about farmers being the ecological stewards of that land.
Yeah.
Um they sort of used to determine where that water would go and you've touched on on-farm ecosystems.
Yeah.
Um a big part of what what we're looking at is, you know, environmental water and that sort of stuff. Who is now determining where that water goes if it's not farmers looking after things like you've talked about in their own riverbanks? That they have a an interest in themselves.
Well, there was a farmer I was speaking to during the drought and he said, um, it's hard to be green when you're in the red. So, once upon a time when water had essentially no value, like, yes, you could farm out of it, but if you had leftover water, you'd actually put water into your wetland or you'd. You'd water your tree plantation, as as kids, we used to plant trees with our family during the holidays and things and create wildlife corridors. But now you've actually created a huge tremendous value around water and so. Farmers can't justify to their bank manager that they're watering trees down the back or their or their farm, and so you see a lot of this. Uh work that used to happen for free that was actually just part of the way that they appreciated, the land has dropped off. And so now we focus on the environment, whether it be through uh the Living Murray Programme or. Or the Commonwealth Environmental Waterholder and the works they do at a state level. They traditionally focus on uh publicly owned assets that they have determined are critical. So if we said conservatively, you know, private land is probably seventy percent of the Murray Darling Basin, public might be thirty and they might be caring for five percent. And so when we talk about the environment, it's a huge, like, much broader um part. So where we are and we used to farm, a lot of broad acre sort of flood irrigation, which. Some people consider isn't very uh water efficient, but it actually has a huge ecological benefit, um. There's lots of ibis rookeries near us, so corang ibis rookeries, and you'd have all these migratory birds that'd actually come and feed in your crops as you were irrigating. And so fro- frogs and spiders and snakes and all these things that we used to just appreciate as as part of the land. But we've removed all that, so we're focusing specifically on water. A classic example is Victoria, they've just done their um Northern Victorian Irrigation Upgrade Scheme. So they've wiped out about two thousand kilometres of earthen channels, so most of our delivery systems. Were all gravity fed, so no energy, you know, they were set up eighty years ago with low horsepower tractors, there wasn't a lot. But they had these awesome gravity fed systems, look, they weren't a hundred percent water efficient, they had a bit of seepage and things, but they created. Wildlife corridors because the seepage grew trees and um birds would nest and frogs and snakes. Well, Victoria's just gone and wiped wiped out two thousand Ks and they replaced them with plastic line channels or pipes. Plastic line channel, they actually doze out everything that's living and they rock the top and they put this plastic lining. Now, anything that goes to get a drink now drowns because it's black plastic from the top to the bottom, so I speak to water baleys and stuff and. They can see fifty day animals a week, it doesn't matter whether it's a koala or a kangaroo or whatever. And so we're we've got a plan to save the environment and yet we're wiping out some of the best ecosystem functions. Now, you don't see birds nesting on those channels anymore because there's no feed, there's no growth on the banks. And the worst case scenario is you put in a pipeline, you actually go to a energy dependent system of delivering water, so the cost of water delivery will continue to go up. There'll be depreciation, but then nothing can get a drink. So, like during a drought or whatever, when you're maintaining just critical human needs and stock and domestic water, the channel systems are refuges for animals. Like, they're, it's not just farmers and community that relies on the water, it is the rest of our whole system and and yet we've totally lost it under the basin plan, we have. We have really taken this us versus them mentality and water has to be saved and save an environment, but it's not the environment in general that that I appreciate.
Mister, you want to ask, sorry?
Yeah, I was going to ask, um, I just wanted to just a bit of clarification over something, uh. Mister uh Polkinghorn, in your uh submission. Just some um clarity around the 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 high security entitlements, so if there's a um. Part in here where you uh talk about um seeing a trend of this activity applying to the carrying over of high security. Entitlements is obviously in relation to carryover, um whose characteristics do not allow high security entitlements carried over from one season to the next. Then you've got a high security order cannot be carried over on a high security licence, just explain um that a little bit. Further uh for the committee because you do say that that that's what's happening, is that correct? There is the carryover of high security entitlements?
Yeah, that's correct, so uh pre-basin plan and and all these changes, high security weren't able to carry over water. Because they're essentially guaranteed allocation every year, and so. Carryover was a product for for lower security licence holders. And and coming into the basin plan, we were told that the characteristics of any water licence would not vary um coming in, but. But now with a free open market in water trading, there is no tagging or identifying of. How that water was essentially generated or allocated, what licence it was allocated against. And so we're seeing people being able to take their high security allocation. Uh pay someone a nominal fee or a bit to park it on their water licence. And so that has an impact um on allocations to other licence holders because our dams actually require throughput. To actually allocate more water and so they're able to essentially shift the characteristics of their licence more for into something else, pay someone a fee, park it. And then pick it up when and when they want to use it.
Yeah, and that's where you um also use the um uh the example or saying that um farmers are essentially um. Selling allocations rather than growing crops because it's more profitable, of course, to do this, potentially more profitable. Profitable to be paid to park their allocation as well as opposed to to growing crops, is that? Also becoming, that's also playing out on the ground?
Yeah, absolutely.
Farmers choose to grow at any given year now.
Yeah, and it's not just farmers, it's also external investors who who hold water entitlements. But there is a a generational shift in farmers who are retiring, um because, like. For succession planning, all the rest of it, the the cost and the value of water has just exploded, so. When I first came home to the farm, you could buy water, two hundred dollars a meg permanent, like that same water's now eighteen hundred dollars. Uh Victorian high security was about fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars, that's now over seven thousand dollars a megaliter. So, there's a real, basically, if you're a fa- young farmer not inheriting, you're basically out of the water market within our region. You can't grow enough to be viable, and so we have people who are now retiring out of the industry, um. And also that's a a result of the changes, um the way water delivery is happening and the impacts on industries in a broader context. And so they have uh all this water that they can park or trade or space on their licences where they're able to facilitate these. Like, an example, the Maribet district, like, there were sixty four dairy farmers, there's now three, um similar sort of figures around. Kahuna and um, yeah, the Walkall district, I think there might be one dairy farmer left. And yeah, so there's, we actually had strength within the um. Variety, the commodities we grew because you never know which market's going to be up or down depending on global markets and seasonal conditions, so the. There is a real benefit in having diversity and um a spread across production type, so I think we lose that in highest value. For me, returns.
Uh so, uh, Mr. Polkinghorn, what you're essentially saying is, um, if irrigated agriculture is uh is driven by the cost of water as an input. Uh and that cost is inflated because of uh the water trading market, then we risk not producing the food and fibre. Uh that is required by our domestic market, let alone export, but for our domestic market, so essentially, as you said, we're reducing the diversity. Uh in our irrigated agriculture output, would that be pretty much what you're trying to say?
Yeah, the way we're, the trajectory we're currently going on, you could actually have an irrigation industry that is fully reliant on water trading and some select. High value crops, like, you'll actually lose your core production of, you know, the bare essentials that Australians sort of rely on. Um and I think that's why we have to be very careful about how, like, to me, it's been the Wild West of of water policy and in the basin plan as far as. Trading and water delivery and setting up new irrigation areas, we've actually thrown out. A lot of the knowledge and the wisdom that was gleaned from the last eighty years of of how we set things up. And yeah, it's become a a full um capitalistic, you know, and yeah, you'll actually lose, um. You could go through stock numbers and and all sorts of things, we're losing genetics, we're losing um. Experience, we're losing knowledge, we're we're actually undermining the um. Core critical mass within our irrigation districts, so the Victorian, like, they spent two billion dollars upgrading that. I think it's now fifty two percent of those outlets now don't deliver water, so. You spend all this money, you've you've wiped out environments, you've wiped out farmers and now your core business actually is inefficient and they're actually losing money every year and. And the same will happen to the New South Wales irrigation companies, I mean, water recovery was sort of done in a Swiss cheese effect, so they they didn't prioritise. Lower value areas or more inefficient areas, they just cherry picked willing sellers, but that actually creates uh. Deliverability inefficiency or deliverable inefficiencies because you're you're sending water further past farms that now don't irrigate, um. So, yeah, and I think we're getting to a tipping point, um, yeah, you look at the job losses, you look at um the supply of milk and. And all these other critical things, we're going to get to a stage where we're really going to fall on our face, in my opinion.
You talk about, um, in your paper about uh. Uh some steps that Victoria's taken in relation to legislation uh for. Regulating and exposure of the market, and what are they doing right and we're doing wrong, so far at least, anyway?
Yeah, well, they're they're moving towards a a publicly accessible water register and and as I say, that that is already in legislation. And I think it's it's critically important to give people confidence and also show. Who is manipulating in our markets, I mean, we hear lots of uh accounts of of politicians and bureaucrats. Acting within the water space while they're actually creating policies around the very the very product and if that was. Shares or property or whatever, that would be an absolute no-no, and um and yet we have none of that regulation, I think. We really need an open and transparent water register where people can see who owns what water. I mean, if I'm buying real estate, my wife can get on the computer in a couple of seconds, tell me who owns it, where they live, all the rest of it. You know, we have so many other um industries that we have to be transparent in and yet water, it's almost two billion dollars um. In annual water trade, completely unregulated, like, you you don't even need an ABN to trade water and this is a critical resource, this is a limited supply.
It seems that the uh the water in the basin's really been met, it's heading towards, going by your evidence, from what you're saying, is heading towards managing water. For the traders rather than for the farmers, is that what, is that your point?
Yeah, I think I think there is a big uh influence by those who are doing really well at water trading and. And those who are able to advocate for their personal interest, but it's coming at a cost of sustainable production. Our actual environment, like our rivers and our deliverability, and those managing the river, like the M D B A, don't seem to care. I've raised this time and time again with them and it's actually written in legislation and they don't do anything, I mean, I've been doing. Daily, weekly videos for the last two years on on how fast the rate of erosion is on our river, like. In a high river now, I can measure a fifty centimetre notch, so we can lose fifty centimetres into the bank in a week now. Now, if we'd done that for the last sixty years of river regulation, like, we wouldn't have a river there, so we obviously did things better. Previously than we are currently doing it now, and yet for whatever reason, we don't act to actually address what's going on.
Hmm hmm.
Just a.
I'm Mr. Paul.
Oh, thanks, Jeff, um, Mr. Polkinghorn, just something I just wanted to clarify very quickly, um, we're in relation to the Speak Up campaign. The momentum that has driven the campaign, the twelve thousand signatures, were they specifically from? The seat of Murray or other catchments?
Yeah.
Take us through that?
Yeah, essentially from the seat of Murray, um, yeah, and they were gathered very quickly and and we're in a vastly populated electorate. And there is a real, there has been a real desire for the community to seek change, I mean, they went to Canberra. To actually advocate for uh meaningful change, people spend, you know, I've known people who've spent twenty years writing submissions and devoting their spare time. To actually just get meaningful change, I was really blessed to grow up around the the people I did because they'd been involved in water politics from the very get-go and. And they had this, while they disagreed on things, they're always able to come together and talk about, you know. And work for the common good of the nation as well as the states, um but, yeah, we seem to have lost that and. And Speak Up is just a grassroots organisation, we just essentially try to give a voice to uh, yeah, community members and. Um, I'm involved in um environmental and production groups on both sides of the river and. And those groups are made up of of everything from people who've planted trees for fifty years to um former science. School teachers and and irrigators and, you know, it is just community that that, you know, we grew up with. And so we we try to try to give a voice and try to advocate for, we've we've tried to give solutions and roadmaps on using. Infrastructure and our creeks to deliver water within our footprint to to have an environmental and a. Community benefit, but quite often we get the door shut on us, like, you know, they want, well, they talk about um. Localism or they talk about co-design, but when when push comes to shove, if if that's out of line with. What the political agenda is or or what their process is, there's so many good ideas get thrown away and. And yeah, I think it's really sad to burn so much goodwill and and it's been going on for a good fifteen years in my experience, yeah.
One one more quick question. Quite a lot of you. Uh. The whole system, the way everything's been going, what I want to know is, is this contra- contributing to the increased. Cost of food reaching the markets? So ultimately, is a consumer paying higher and higher cost?
Yeah, they will be.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, I'm just looking, everything's going up, I just want to know whether or not this has. You know, some sort of reference to what's going on or part.
Yeah.
Reference to what's going on.
Well, you've only got to look at the reduction in. Well, you've only got to look at the reduction in dairy farms and the producer and the processes.
Yeah, I was only reading about that the other day.
Yeah.
This is a concern.
Yeah, I think Kahuna's lost forty thousand dairy cows like in the last, I don't know, six years or something, and so and yeah, as I said, forty or fifty two percent of their irrigation outlets don't now deliver water, so you know, they were dairy farms and they were they were food producers, your staple foods like, so wheat and barley and dairy and all the things that Australians um expect, and I I think it's really important to highlight that while we can import all these other things, that Australia's regulation and control of chemicals and how we manage our environment is really second to none, so if I was feeding my family, I'd put clean produce grown close to home with a low carbon footprint that is tightly regulated and and we have all that, we had all that, and if we don't address these things, we won't have it.
Yeah, no, we we were, we were a very well-sourced, efficient nation at one point, and I couldn't agree more.
Hmm.
Uh but thank you for your time, it's it's a shame we don't have a lot more of it.
All right, well, at that point, we'll we'll bring the questioning to a close, thank you, Mister Peralati, Mister Polkinghorn for coming and answering our questions and giving us some insight, um we'll now take a break for uh fifteen minutes and we're back at eleven forty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you. We go online? We online? Okay, thank you. Not quite.
We're right?
We're live yet? Yep, thank you. All right, thank you. I welcome our next uh group of witnesses, starting with you, Mister McCalman, can you please give us your full name, title, and swear either swear either an oath or an affirmation? You'll have to switch your microphone on, press the button, please, that's it, pull it towards you.
Certainly, uh Ronald McCalman, CEO of Murray Irrigation. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Mister Pissali.
Thank you, Michael Robert Pissali, uh Water Policy and Strategy Manager at Murray Irrigation. I love the Bible, thanks. Thank you. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Mister Heath.
Uh Darcy Heath, appearing on behalf of Southern Riverine Irrigators. Uh I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Mister Shepherd, if you're there. I can't hear you.
I'm here, yes. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Okay, Miss Miller?
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, um would someone, maybe starting with you, Mister Calman, would you like to make a short opening statement?
Uh thank you, um we appreciate the opportunity to uh appear at the public hearing today and provide comments on the water trade and related matters. Um I I'm recently appointed in the role, less than two months, and I'm joined by our Water Policy Manager, Michael Pissali. Murray Irrigation was privatised in nineteen ninety-five, is an unlisted public company and constitutionally not-for-profit. Our company delivers water to over twenty-one hundred family-owned land holdings across seven hundred and twenty-four thousand hectares in the southern marina, centered around the towns of Denilquinn, Finley, Berrigin, Waukou and Millamane. Our region produces food that feeds Australia and the world. We are close to public storage dams and run an efficient gravity-fed water delivery network. Water trading has benefited farmers by enabling them to either buy or sell water to suit their business needs. This creates incentive for water to be used more efficiently and encourages investment. Today, we'd like to outline three topics from our submission. Firstly, work done by the A triple C. Secondly, mitigating some impacts of water of the water trade. And I'm gonna pass across on the third point to Michael to share with your M I L solution to avoiding further water recovery requirements. So in relation to the work done by the A triple C, we note that the A triple C has done a lot of work recently in the area and the roadmap for reform panel led by Principal Advisor Daryl Quinn-Liven has engaged with us, most notably is the work done on implementing a mandatory intermediary code of practice. Secondly, around the mitigation of impacts of the water trade. Water trading has facilitated the expansion of permanent plantings downstream of the traditional irrigation areas of New South Wales and Northern Victoria. Our concern is this net increase in permanent plantings will exacerbate delivery shortfalls and create significant issues through a lack of available water should there be a return to a millennium drought scenario. In considering these risks, government should consider the adoption of flow-share concept um on the extraction of rivers below the choke. This is similar to how irrigation infrastructure operators such as M I L manage peak demand periods in channels and would protect long-term water users and send better market signals regarding managing overdevelopment. If there are additional conveyance losses through the trade of this water, then in addition to current rules, exchange rates should be used between different zones of the river. Thank you, I'll pass across to Michael.
Thanks, Ron. Hi, everyone, thank you for today. Um I guess um one of the things we'd like to talk about is uh as a as a topic of interest is a solution to avoid water recovery. And one of our worries is 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 further water recovery from our region and its associated negative impacts on communities that rely on water for agriculture to survive. A solution to this, we are proposing to partner with governments and environmental stakeholders to implement Australia's largest targeted environmental watering initiative uh using our supply system. This project focuses on achieving environmental outcomes on a very large scale and we're welcome the opportunity to discuss this in more detail at this hearing. And I've got some submission material as well to to show as well, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Heath.
Uh yeah, so Southern Riverine Irrigators represent about eighteen hundred landholders across the Murray Valley footprint, um chiefly uh Murray Irrigation shareholders, so, um but we also work in conjunction with the Murray Valley Private Diverters um and M R S G, which is Murray Regional Strategy Group. Um and basically, we just uh advocate for um, you know, protecting the uh reliability of the New South Wales Murray General Security Irrigator um and try and uh advocate for the the betterment of uh regional communities in that in that zone. Um today, I wanted to focus on the fact that um although it's been legislated and agreed to by the New South Wales Government, um we do to to date not have a uh accessible and free publicly available water registrar. Um and we we actually aren't able to drill down into where the water is owned uh within any of the nine, ten valleys um of the basin um in a in a way that, you know, we can look at whether this uh water is being uh accrued or, you know, um owned by interests or uh foreign interests that don't have um the the best interests of New South Wales regional communities at heart. Um and the second one was uh as going to be and touched on by uh Murray Irrigation was the exchange rates and trading zones, so again, if you look at Schedule Three of the um the Basin Water Market and Trading objectives, which is is federal legislation, but the New South Wales Government has obligations to deliver against those objectives. Um it clearly states that um if we're going to be trading water from one zone to another, whether it's below choke or above choke, um do we need to put in exchange rates if if this water is being delivered in a way that is inefficient? Um which is, you know, if it goes out of bank or if um, you know, there's deliverability concerns or supply constraints or it breaches channel capacity to to get delivered from the dams to where it's used. Um and, you know, we we can see that's that's happened um increasingly since water trade really ramped up sort of post two thousand and seven, when uh when water and land titles were were separated. Um and this is confirmed by the M D B A, talking about um, you know, in the eleven-year period from two thousand eight to two thousand nineteen, the river channel capacity was reduced by a twenty-one point four percent in the in the Murray uh at the at the Barma choke. Um and if we're losing one-fifth of our deliverability within the river, uh within the main um river from human dart mouth, um then we are going to have increased losses because we are having more demand downstream. Um we've got all this water to deliver and and it does not fit in the system anymore. Um and, you know, we've got um the the federal government's facilitated this increase in trade, the state government is delivering water to these water users and the local governments are um approving these greenfield developments and increasing use downstream. Um and none of them are talking about all of the risks associated with um, you know, with not actually having a a um like a guide and connected approach to this, because uh well, for no reason, actually, they they should be um they they should be working collaboratively for the betterment of, you know, the um the three pillars of what this water reform is meant to meant to do, which is to increase the socio-economic and environmental outcomes on behalf of, you know, Australians, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mister Shepherd and Miss Clea, Clea Miller? Would you like to make a
Thank you very much, um my name is Clea Miller, I'm the Chief Executive Officer. Start with my name.
Yes, please.
My name is Clea Miller, I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the New South Wales Irrigators Council. I'm appearing here today with Peter Shepherd, Peter Shepherd is um a director on the board of the New South Wales Irrigators Council.
Would you like to make a short opening statement?
Uh yes, I will, thank you. I'd like to thank you for the invitation to appear before the committee today. This inquiry largely duplicates the A triple C inquiry into southern basin water markets that was conducted through two thousand nineteen and two thousand and twenty. Uh the final report was released in March last year. With reference to this inquiry's terms of reference A and B, the A triple C has already investigated claims of abuse of the water trading market and participants cornering or fixing fixing the market. The A triple C obtained detailed trade information from the Australian and Basin State Governments and their agencies, irrigation corporations, water exchange platforms, water brokers, institutional investors and agribusinesses. And that resulting database detailing water trading activity in the basin since two thousand and twelve is the most comprehensive record of basin water trading information yet compiled. The A triple C, in analysing this database, found no evidence that ex- investors exercised market power or manipulated markets. However, the A triple C rightly raised concerns about too few rules governing the conduct of market participants, leaving open the potential for market manipulation and insider trading. The A triple C made many recommendations to reform the operation of the water market, to close regulatory gaps and therefore the potential for market abuse abuse to occur are detected. The Commonwealth Government has engaged an independent principal advisor to work with the Basin States, industry communities and other stakeholders to develop a phased, practical and cost-effective plan for water market reform, reflecting the A triple C recommendations. Um a practical and cost-effective roadmap supported by Basin States is now due out next month. We support this process and we believe in consistency approach to reform across all states is essential rather than New South Wales going it alone. In relation to terms of reference C for this inquiry, the effectiveness of water registration and disclosure in New South Wales, it is already possible to find out who owns which water access licence from the New South Wales Land Registry Services, provided you have the WAL number and pay a fee, no different to when you search for and obtain property titles. The Water New South Wales Water Trade Register records traded WAL numbers, so it's a good place to start to obtain those WAL numbers. But I would have to say, the L R S search is not an especially straightforward process and it could be streamlined and improved, it is actually quite um quite a palaver of a process to go through to um to submit your submit an application to get a WAL and find out who owns it. So there's certainly room for improvement there. As for greater transparency on individuals' water account balances and their allocation trading activity, we do not support this as it is akin to making a person's bank account details public to any and all. Our members have consistently and firmly rejected any such proposals. The A triple C has already examined the matters covered in terms of reference D for this inquiry, the effects of water trading on the economy, communities and the environment, and we agree with the A triple C that the rules, policies and arrangements that enable and support trade do almost adequately reflect scarce storage and delivery capacity and this has led to river channel congestion and negative third-party and environmental impacts. Again, these matters are being worked through the principal advisor and his team. And finally, um we are much more concerned about the impacts on communities, economies and the environment should the federal government really enter the market. We know that the government's massive market intervention a decade ago distorted the market, artificially inflated prices and compounded environmental degradation through too many entitlements in upstream trading trading zones being purchased for water that's intended for downstream purposes. Given that the volume of major entitlements traded annually in the southern basin has more than halved over the last decade from around two hundred and thirty gigalitres a year down to around a hundred gigalitres a year, the government would effectively corner the market should it enter to try to buy, say, four hundred and fifty gigalitres, even if that was phased over ten years. So thank you, and we would welcome your questions.
Thank you, questions? Do you want to start?
Yeah, happy to. Um I think this might be Southern Riverine Irrigators, but it's to do with um um the assertion that's being made, the allegation, the statement that's being made around trade that in its current format is actually in breach of the Water Act two thousand and seven, um and um and the Basin Plan two thousand and twelve. It's to do with um the rapid drawdown of water, et cetera, and the capacity of channels and causing environmental damage. But can you just talk through a bit more, uh it's probably Mister uh Heath, but can you talk through a bit more around uh why you believe that is the case?
Uh yeah, so I I sort of touched on it in the opening address, uh Mick, but uh so basically, it's it's around the fact that we've got these trading zones, um and and that's a part of, you know, your your licence and where you can draw your water from. Um but then what's happening at the moment is you've actually got uh water being delivered above channel capacity. Um and if you talk to Brian Graham from Deep Eye, um he he will say that they apply a twenty percent loss factor um when the environment orders water, and they know that it's going to breach channel capacity, so they've got to breach channel capacity to deliver it to whichever site um he's or sites that are that are called upon that need watering. Um and he will do that to the benefit of the irrigators so that there's not uh this increased conveyance weighting um on their licence. Yet, when the productive sector is doing exactly the same thing, ordering water that's going to breach that channel capacity, uh the losses are socialised back onto everybody. So if I am an irrigator in the New South Wales Murray and I don't order water and I can't order water that breaches channel capacity, um then uh I am effectively underwriting somebody else's use downstream that's that wants to order that water even though there's no capacity in the river to do so. And I'm not talking about with um the uh like tributary uh inflows and all that sort of stuff, like I'm talking on callable water from a dam that is meeting a a restriction in the uh in in its in the channel, in the river um and then needs to go over bank and into the forest and then back into another uh you know, into another tributary river like the Waukou or or the Edwards or the Neema and then flow downstream to where it's to where it's to be delivered. And if if Brian Graham from Deep Eye is uh is offsetting those losses or debiting the environmental account when the when the channel capacity is breached and not doing it on the productive side, then we're we are wearing a cost of this increased development and demand and supply downstream.
And so what's the impact on the quality of the quality of the water and salinity of this this type of activity?
Uh so I guess all the salinity impacts are happening um where, you know, in your sandier soils. So if if you've got twelve to fifteen megs a hectare going out onto sandy soils, um you know, that have been irrigated and um and, you know, you've got all the fertiliser and stuff like that, then it's, you're gonna have um your salinity issues in in your low low-lying areas wherever that water will disperse to. Um but sort of for my focus would be on, you know, the water quality uh decreasing within the River Murray. Because if you've got this static demand, and this is where it contributes the um the basin plan, if you've got this static demand and this riverbank notching, um you start to increase the suspended sediment that is dropped into the river system. And if you're uh decreasing the visibility uh within the river channel and decreasing water quality, then all of your um organisms and stuff that require visibility to feed and to um uh to mate and reproduce, uh um their their capacity to the to do that is limited. Um and and the basin plan actually states that, um you know, things to avoid um when you are dealing with water quality is riverbank notching and increased in suspended sediment, and they say that this can be avoided by not um having this static d- demand and static supply of water.
So that's the that's the issue. What's the solution? What, should this committee make a recommendation around this in your view?
Yeah, I think there should be some trial and error as to, because we're not gonna be able to get it right because you've got Yeah, I think there should be some trial and error as to, because we're not going to be able to get it right because you've got antecedent conditions um, that are going to, you know, wet or dry the system and it's going to be different from one year to the next. I think you need to, um, like be engaging with, so, because there are similar conversion factors that were, um, implemented in water sharing plans in, in the Northern Basin and in the Northern Rivers. And I think similar thing needs to happen and maybe start with twenty percent of, um, you know, if, if somebody's going, like it's not, it's no one's, well, it's various reasons as to why the channel capacity has reduced over that time and will continue to reduce. But if we, if we continue to deliver the water in the same way that we are now, then we're going to have a, a, a further decrease in that capacity um, to the detriment of that triple bottom line that's meant to be improved. So I think we've got to implement some sort of conversion factor, um, going forward on the people that are delivering, are getting this water delivered above the channel capacity of the river.
Oh, so, yeah, we haven't, um, uh, studied that specific matter. I guess we can only comment about how we manage water delivery in our own channel systems in terms of the flow share and how we manage those flows equitably. Because in, in some ways we're similar, as in, uh, we can only put so much flow down a supply channel, any more than that will spill over the bank. And hence, I guess we have, uh, some policies and rules in place about how to manage that equitably and fairly.
Uh, maybe Ms. Miller, does the, um, New South Wales Irrigators have a view about, um, about trade? Uh, with the comments of Mr. Hare and, and trade bridging the, um, the M D V A plan?
Uh, I don't have any comment on whether or not it breaches the plan. We haven't sort of studied that or done specific research into it. Uh, we do have general concerns though about how losses are accounted for as water moves through the system and how efficiently the, um, the river system is, is operated. Peter, do you wish to add anything?
No, no, he's covered it. Thanks, Claire.
Uh, might just, uh, jump in about the, um, particularly in relation to the growth in, um, uh, nut plantations or almond plantations below the choke. Um, or I think all of your submissions, uh, uh, talked about this. So if a farmer wants to put in below the varmit choke, say sixty-five hectares addition, in addition to what's already there, say, of, of almonds right now, what's the requirement to demonstrate that there is and will be water available into the future? And that agreeing to or establishing that sixty-five hectare of new almond plantations isn't going to be even more detrimental to, uh, irrigators and farmers upstream. I think what you're saying is there isn't any, uh, oversight whatsoever. Is that correct? So.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so, in other words, because I, I've, you know, heard and seen that the, um, enormous, uh, growth. So in other words, the continued growth of, um, the, the continued, continued growth of almonds and other, other nuts, but, but largely almonds is, is essentially driving a lot of farmers out of, um, their, their ability to grow other crops, whether it's or, or, um, other forms of agriculture. That, that's what's happening. And I'm just thinking in terms of what it's likely, if it's bad now, what it could, what it's going to be like in five years, ten years when, um, the new crops now are, are starting to mature and kind of where does it end? Mr. Hare, do you want to comment on that? And then I'll go to, to Murray Irrigation.
Yeah, thanks, Kate. Um, yeah, I totally agree. There is no, as, as of now, there is no, um, regulation that's, that's in place by local, state or federal government to look at, you know, are we at capacity or, um, downstream demand? Whether that be through, um, horticulture or, or other avenues, but obviously you've, you've got that bottleneck effect with all your horticultural plantings, like it gets hot, gets windy and it's all at the same time of year. And it's twelve to fifteen megs a hectare when they are at full maturity. Um, I think the problem is you've got these greenfield developments that are being approved by local government. And then there's, and then the, the New South Wales Government's approach is, oh, well, you can do it, but it's at your own risk. But at the end of the day, um, if they're buying water and getting it delivered, then it's at our risk. It's not actually their risk. If, if their, if their margins, you know, here and our margins here, um, and we're growing stable foods and we've been here a lot longer. And then you, you look back at the legislation and these protective parameters that are meant to be put in place like now, and it would have already been communicated and, and flowed through to market dynamics. Um, and, and they're not, um, implemented, you sort of think, well, you know, where is, like, where is this going to be leading? And that's why I guess we put in that submission of that, of that contravention. Like, it's pretty clear that there's, that they need to be in there. And for, for no reason that I can see other than it's too hard, um, they aren't.
Mr. McElman, um, I think it was Murray, uh, Irrigation's, um, submission that specifically talked about this. Do you have any, uh, comment? Okay.
Uh, thank you. Yeah. Um, I guess we can, um, reflect on our previous experience. So we understand with New South Wales, for example, high security, there was a reason where high security water went. And at the time you grew your, your grapes or your permanent planting to match those high security water entitlements. And that water is pretty reliable. Um, back in the Millennium drought, um, I think for the first time ever, some of those guys were on fifty percent, which was half the water that they normally got. And I guess if we recall from our experience, that was extremely stressful period for people who are used to being able to use that water to grow a permanent planting. And as you know, the permanent planting, it must have water every year. You can't just put it on hiatus and just hold there for a year or two until the drought's over. Um, it can actually be quite devastating economically, especially when you spend a large amount of money per hectare establishing it. So, so I guess one of our worries was what we observed in the Millennium drought. I guess since then, there's been further water recovery. So it's theoretically less water if you look at the total consumptive pool. Um, and then there's actually probably been a net increase. So, um, and that then, that increase could mean, you know, we think, oh, should another, should another sequence of events occur again, it could be a very stressful time, but ultimately it could, you know, fall back on, um, at, at, at a number of levels. So I guess that was our, our worry and I guess why we're, I guess, trying to flag some potential policy considerations just to work through that, to cover that risk.
Mr. McElman, or maybe to you, Mr. Pissar, Pissar, Pissasali, sorry. Um, maybe you've only recently joined the board as the, uh, the CEO, so maybe you don't have the answer to these questions. But we heard evidence this morning around governance and the problems with governance from previous, uh, uh, people talking to the issues around, uh, the M I L, uh, questions of, uh, propriety, insider trading, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I'd just like to make some inquiries about M I L internal market and safeguards uh, that ensure the prob, the probity of directors. Um, between two thousand and sixteen and seventeen, a former director of Murray Irrigation breached his responsibilities as a director twenty-eight times by leaking commercial or other sensitive company records in order to pursue personal vendettas or in attempts to profit from insider information. What steps has Murray Irrigation taken to ensure that directors who own water entitlements cannot use internal information for personal profit?
Uh, thank you. I'm going to take that question on notice if that's right.
Okay, I've got another one for you then.
Yep.
Um, in report, in the report to Murray Irrigation, Deloitte flagged with Murray Irrigation on the twenty-ninth of August, two thousand and sixteen, Chris Brooks sent an email to Graham Pyle saying, and I quote, "I really think we can screw this market to our advantage and take all the profits while bringing heaps of cheap water to the region." Are directors still in a position to crash the Murray Irrigation internal trading market? Can you answer that one?
Um.
Can you manipulate the market?
Uh, I'm, I'm going to say no.
No.
And that's, so.
So what's changed?
Well, be, be new, if you can, let me, that is a starting point. Um.
Sorry, say again?
Given I'm new as a starting point, I, I have to accept what you've, if I'm accepting what you've commented on.
It's documented. So, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a quote from a Deloitte's report that was specifically called for by the board because of the problems caused at the time.
Okay, so from, from what I've observed in my time in, in terms of the governance structures we have in place around the flow of information from the board, um, I don't have that concern that you've identified.
You don't have concern. So, so what active steps have been taken to improve safeguards and governance around internal trading market?
Um, a, as I said, if I'm looking at the board governance structure that's in place, not specific to any one part of that governance structure, then.
Or do you have governance guidelines? Do you have a, you know, a director's handbook that says these are the things you can do and these are the things you can't do?
Uh, ye- yes, we do. Uh.
Can you table that for us, please?
Uh, yep.
What steps has Murray Irrigation taken to ensure directors cannot profit from internal information such as internal trading market? As the internal trading market? What steps have you actively taken?
Uh, need, to, to, to validate that, I'd need to take that question on notice.
Okay, thank you. Um, at a two thousand and seventeen board meeting of Murray Irrigation, a paper entitled Snowy Hydro, carryover product was tabled for discussion. This paper stated that Chris Brooks and another director were attempting to personally profit from the use of commercially sensitive internal board information. This was done by falsely presenting these requests as coming from the board. Has Murray Irrigation done anything to ensure directors cannot generate arbitrage from external water market alongside internal sensitive board information?
Um, as I said, I'm going to need to take that on notice as well.
Okay, thank you. Has Murray Irrigation fully implemented the recommendations of the Deloitte report? Have you been there long, long enough, Mr. Pissasali, to answer that question?
Yeah, so I'm not involved. Uh, yes, I haven't been involved in that, in that report or what, what the matter was in related to. Sorry, so I can't comment.
But these sounds like questions that would be more, um, I guess, better, uh, noted, uh, answered on notice because we don't have any directors here. But we can't have a CEO that's been there for six weeks talking about.
Are you talking on behalf of Murray Irrigation?
Yeah, I am talking on behalf of Murray Irrigation as a shareholder and a representative of Southern Riverine Irrigators.
So you, can you answer those questions?
No, I'm saying that you would need a director or the chairman of the board.
No, 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 I know that. I know that. I'm getting those answers from Mr. Mc, McElman. He's, he's the, uh, CEO. I'm asking him questions about this, this particular exercise. Um, it's a great concern to us that we're still getting, even after this, these investigations by Deloitte were instituted in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. And yet we're still getting questions and complaints from irrigators here this morning in relation to the behaviour and patterns of Murray, the Murray, uh, Irrigation Limited. Does that worry you in any way? Five years later, people are still complaining. Has anything changed?
If I, if I could validate that, I would be concerned, but I'm, as I said, the re, the reason being new in the role, um, you, you're mentioning a number of circumstances I wasn't privy to. Um, and in terms of reports that I, I haven't fully read. Um, so that, that's why I mean, I would need to take it on notice before I could comment.
Okay. Questions?
Just to be clear, that you are aware of the Deloitte report that Mr. Borzak is referring to?
Uh, yes, I am.
Yeah. Um, and you have, have you, have you read that?
Uh, I've read parts of it, um, but, but I, I couldn't answer questions on it. I mean, it's not something I specifically studied for attending today.
Well, one of my questions was, have the recommendations and the findings from that report been implemented? You say you've read it, you must have some inkling of where it's going.
Sorry, I said I've read parts of it. Um, I'll take your question on notice in terms of whether they've been implemented.
Okay. Any more questions?
Just wanted to ask, um, obviously the federal government, um, has done some work um, in relation to efforts to de- develop better regulatory systems for the water trading market, principally led by the principal advisor, um, as Ms. Miller noted, um, in her opening statement, um, and in, in the submission from New South Wales Irrigators, they have been involved in discussions with the principal advisor, um, about their work. Is that something that, um, your organisations have been involved with as well? And if so, do you, are you confident, um, that that work by the federal government is going to resolve some of the issues you've identified? Or, or is it still your view that the New South Wales Government should be taking action at a state level in a way to complement, augment or build on, um, the role that the federal government is playing?
Um, so, so we have had interaction, um, with the A C C in, in relation to this matter. Um, my view is we, we just want to be careful we don't duplicate, um, when you're having two concurrent, um, reviews. So, so that, that would be my position. Michael could detail more around what that engagements look like.
Thanks, Sean. Yeah, um, we've been in touch, uh, with the, with the, 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 this is called the Road, the Road to Reform, uh, Water Markets Panel led by, uh, Daryl Quinn-Libin. Uh, so we've certainly engaged with, with that panel, uh, I think at two or three times now. And, uh, I guess one of the key focus areas was that, uh, uh, fine tuning and developing that, uh, mandatory code of conduct. Um, I think my understanding today has been voluntary, but they're actually looking at taking steps to actually make that, yeah, as, as an enforceable code of conduct. Yeah, and we've been working, uh, with that panel, um, providing, yeah, uh, you know, to work on that. And, uh, something that we've been supportive of. And as a general thumb, uh, the, the better informed a, a buyer or seller, for example, of, of water can be, um, uh, yeah, we think that's, it's a good principle.
Mr. Hare, I just wonder, has, um, Southern Riverine Irrigator been involved in that process at all?
Uh, yes, we have. Yeah, we've flagged the issues that we're flagging today, uh, previously. But, um, yeah, I haven't really seen that much that, that shows a lot of promise yet in that Road to Reform, to be honest. Um, if it's, if it's not going to be done, going to be done in conjunction with the New South Wales Government, who is running, uh, our, our neck of the woods, um, then I think that's, uh, that's a failure as far as I'm concerned. We need to be at the forefront of, um, of making sure that, you know, because eighty percent of the developments are on the big side and, you know, New South Wales is delivering this water. So I think we just need to be cognizant of that.
And one of the other things that's been raised with us this morning, and in a way I sort of think is addressed partially by the A C C's recommendation around what they call the, I just want to get the frame right, the language right. Um, what they call the Water Markets Agency, um, is some kind of independent regulator or independent oversight of the market. Um, is that something that you would be supportive of? People are nodding for the purposes of hands up.
Yes. Yes, and nod, nodding doesn't get reflected in the hands side of the transcript.
I wanted Ms. Miller, um, you know, feel free as well, um, if, you know, just wanted to draw out any feedback or reflections you had on the role of an independent oversight agency or independent regulator of some sort?
Um, we certainly want to see, uh, like a, a single portal where all, all information is brought together, where it is, you know, trading information is transparent and timely. You know, currently we sort of have three different registers in three different states, which all work slightly differently. Trades can occur and not, you know, be read properly, put through the register for sometimes weeks at, um, at a time. So it's not really real time. And that certainly puts anyone other than a broker who has all day, every day to watch the markets. Um, it puts your ordinary irrigators at a great disadvantage. Do we need though a, um, specific water markets agency created, um, in that A S X model style? We're not, not supportive of that, um, not least because it's another layer of bureaucracy. It will be expensive. And the way it works in New South Wales is that irrigators carry the cost of that kind of agency. They will be hit directly to their bottom line. It will increase the costs of, um, engaging in the water market. Um, we feel that there are other agencies that, um, already exist that ought to be able to do that oversight work. One of them would be the A C C.
She, I was asking if Peter had anything.
No, you've covered it. Peter here now, you've covered it fairly well, Claire. I think it's, it needs to be digitized so that we have access to it easier. But I don't want it to go, don't want to say go down to the level that, uh, as mentioned before, you see, I can sit down on a Sunday afternoon and see what I've got in my account or what, what my neighbours have in their account. It's like opening up your bank account. And that's too far.
I'll just jump in with another question if you. Um, just to, to you, Mr. Hare, uh, just to explain, um, further, something in your submission to this inquiry. Um, one of the recommendations that S R I has, uh, is making to the committee is, um, that New South Wales no longer permit any water transfers deliveries that the A C C has advised during breach of the Basin Plan Water Trading Rules. That's one of your, uh, key recommendations. So two parts to the question. Just the, the summarise, if you're able to, um, what the A C C has found in relation to that and why you're, uh, recommending this to the inquiry today. in relation to that and why you're recommending this to the inquiry today?
So I think the ACCC did flag that the water that was being moved downstream was inconsistent with the supply constraints of the system. And if you look at, like, things we touched on earlier, if you don't have the capacity to deliver the water downstream at that point in time that is, that is called upon, then you are going to be breaching channel capacity, you're going to be having environmental impacts of that Ramsout listed site, which is the River Murray Channel.
So that's the breaching of the water trading rules specifically, the basin plan water trading rules that you've just referred to?
Well, that would be, that would be the exchange rates, trading zones, water quality objectives.
Mm-hmm. So, so the ACCC, have they made a recommendation? So the ACCC has clearly found that it's in breach of the basin plan trading, water trading rules. Have they, has the ACCC recommended banning that particular transfer of water if that, if that's the case? Or you're suggesting this is a recommendation now?
Uh, no, so my suggestion was that we would look at applying a loss factor to the water that was delivered above, above the channel capacity. I think the ACCC recommended a review of, of why the physical constraints of the system didn't line up with the water that's being delivered downstream. From, off the top of my head, I'd have to read the exact recommendation on that point.
Okay, and just further then, just for you to expand upon a little, because I think we have time. Another recommendation that SRI has made is that, and it's around, of course, the inflows to Manindi lakes. So in years when inflows do not reach the original model volumes for the basin plan, can you explain, expand upon that further?
Uh, so I think it's Dan Connor, who does the modelling for New South Wales. So he talked about an annual transfer of about 1700 gigalitres from the northern basin to the southern basin. And we was, basically before licences were granted, we wanted to look at keeping the, obviously all of the valley licence categories to within cap. And then we were sort of, I guess, pushing for the floodplain harvesting to also remain under that cap to ensure that we did get river connectivity. And if you talk to, I think, Shagofda Ali from, from Deepi, she also sort of, I guess, a little bit humorous, to be quite honest, in, in that there is no definition by the New South Wales government on what river connectivity means. To me, it's, it's quite straightforward. You know, we want to have the rivers connected as, as quick as, you know, as, as often as possible and, you know, regulate the take within each valley to ensure that connectivity. I mean, we've had connectivity in the, in the southern basin since the twenties, yet in the, in the northern basin, we're only just looking at, you know, licensing this year. And, you know, we sort of flagged that, or the, the whole premise of the basin plan was to, was to look at decreasing the, the expansion of water take from 93, 94 up to 2007, when the war came in. Yet it's taken us, you know, sort of that 28 year period to actually get that, get that under wraps. And, you know, we've got the 2012 modelling from the, from the basin plan that, that put that, that sort of, you know, rough figure of, of 46 gigs to be taken from floodplain harvesting, yet the licensing that's come out has, you know, pushed that up to, I think it's 350 gigs times 500%.
Can I just, sorry, can I just jump in with a point of order? Just one second. Not meaning to be obstructive, I just think I...
I was just about to get to how does it impact on water trade?
No, 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 it's not about your question really. I just think there's been a couple of times where bureaucrats have been named, almost implying that it's their decision that, that's led to this. I, I just don't know whether that's appropriate.
Well, I mean, if it's not, if it's not mentioned in a detrimental way, I think it's okay. I just caution those that are giving evidence not to adversely mention people, but if, in, in, in what Mr. Hare is saying, I think it's fine in terms of that sort of, that sort of quote.
So just the final follow-up, sorry, for that, I'm sorry, Scott, I thought you were about to say this isn't about floodplain harvesting and I was like, I'm going to get there.
Not yet.
Uh, is that, not yet, but let's make it, no.
See whether it's not here.
Is, uh, so the impact that, that therefore that has Mr. Hare on water trading within the southern basin, could you just explain that then?
Yeah, so water is, is delivered all along the length of the Murray Basin and Murray Darling Basin. If you are, you know, ordering water or, or delivering water on behalf of Hume, Borneo Draklaring, Dartmouth and Lake Victoria, Manindi, and delivering to South Australia, for example, then if you are not getting any trib in flows or any flows at all from the Darling, then you are going to have to deliver more from ours, from storages in the Binge and the Murray to meet those demands, whether they be environmental trade. Because of that Murray Darling Basin agreement back in 1915, it said we have to deliver 1850 gigs to the, to the South Australian border. And then any, any trade that sort of follows on from that, if, if that water's been allocated. But if you've got those commitments and one of the main delivery points is, is offline, then you are going to have, you know, this increased supply issue. So, and then if, if you've got more, more water going down the system and the same or less capacity, that's going to exacerbate that.
Um, Mr., I might, I have a question.
Yeah, please.
I just wanted to ask, Mr. Hare, I mean, I think you alluded to this, but I wanted to invite you to elaborate if you wanted to. You know, the impact of the current arrangements on both the availability and the affordability of sort of core food in particular, but also fibre for the domestic market. You know, I think we are already seeing some of that, but what does the future look like if we don't resolve some of these problems in terms of, you know, people when they go to the supermarket, when they go to the shops, looking to purchase products in the domestic market? Because the, the water trading market is operating in such a way that's making that stuff a little bit impossible in a way to produce.
Uh, yes, so there's probably a hundred ways to answer that broad question, sorry, but, um... Yeah, so I mean, you probably have to look at how much, like, and I will focus on just the New South Wales Murray. So if we look at 1980 to 2000 and then compare that with 2000 to 2020, you know, we've got about 33% of the available water in the New South Wales Murray. And part of that is from reliability reductions. There's about 30 different reasons, water trading, one of them, as to why that reliability has been reduced. And then you've got about, I think, 22% has been bought back for the environment in that, in that region. That's why you get, you know, that sort of two thirds comparing to 20 year on 20 year. And if you're producing wheat, barley, oats, canola, all, all these staples, you know, that we live on as opposed to, you know, the, I guess, not staples, like, obviously you can, you know, sustain yourself on those horticultural, and we do. But yeah, if you're going to look for a viable New South Wales Murray going forward, having two thirds of your water cut off in a, in a 20 year period, and when, when you know that the main production that comes out of the New South Wales Murray is stable foods, interlinking with, with all those other 99 factors, I think you've got, you've got a real problem going forward. How, how, how that all plays through to the supermarket and, you know, the, I guess, the standard of living is the question, the broad question you're asking, I think you've got a reduction in it.
Uh, Mr. Hare, I, I've just got a question in relation to the SRI itself, and you're down here today as the executive officer of the Southern Riverine Irrigators. Are you aware of the fact that SRI is a tier two organisation under the Associations and Corporation Act?
Yes, I'm here representing SRI, but I'm the vice chair, not the, not the CEO.
You're the vice chair, okay. Oh, well, sorry, we had you down as executive officer. Are you aware that SRI is required to lodge annual reports and financials with the, for public viewing?
Yes, I am, and we have.
You are aware? Okay. So how can SRI be taken seriously when it does appear that you haven't lodged an annual return since 2018? I mean, are you a representative body?
Yeah, so I can provide the evidence that we have lodged it since 2018.
Well, it's not on the public register.
Yeah, well, it's been lodged.
Well, could you table those for us, please?
Yeah, I will, yeah.
In due course, thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I was just going to go, there's obviously a lot of divergent and quite opposing views on this. I wonder if anyone that have a, have a stab at a recommendation maybe you could make to us that we could take forward that would sort of receive broader support from all players in this. Maybe, maybe Ms. Miller, starting with you?
Sorry, I was distracted by looking up some facts and figures. Would you mind repeating that question?
Is there a recommendation you could suggest that we could take forward that you think would receive quite broad support from across, across, across this sector?
Would that be a recommendation on better, on improved ways that the market could work, the kinds of regs and regulations and so forth that we would like to see?
Yeah, how we can make this whole system better and more workable for everyone involved.
Sure, we can provide you with that. We have got quite, we've done some detailed tables and so forth in our responses to the ACCC inquiry and recommendations. So we're more than happy to put the, to send those through to you. Can I just, while I've got, got your attention, there's just a couple of things that were brought up and, and raised in relation to water use in the northern basin. And I just feel that, you know, a few things need to be corrected there. I'm, I'm not going to go through the whole floodplain harvesting thing again. I think we're all thoroughly aired that one inside and out. But water use in the northern basin is licensed for general security and for supplementary. They do have licences for that. They don't have licences for floodplain harvesting, but that's what those regulations that keep being disallowed are intended to do, is to bring that last form of water take inside the licensing, the modern licensing framework and to ensure that it is meted and to ensure that the volume taken is cut back. So the total water take across all types is within the cap and within the basin plan sustainable diversion limits. Again, I'm happy to provide information to show that it is in fact within the way that the MDPA accounts for, for SDLs and what the SDL should be and how they're calculated. We can provide that information to you. You would have been also able to get it from as well. The other one to do with Manindi inflows, I'm also happy to provide you with graphics that we've done with the data from MDPA and from Border New South Wales that shows how much water in Manindi is very, very closely correlated to very wet years. It's a, it's a, an ephemeral river system. Sometimes it does run dry or parts of it dry up. Other times it's in flood, as it is now and has been for the last two and a half years. We can show you all the connectivity measures that have already been put in place and how they've swung into action every time in the last 20, 30 years to preserve connectivity and shut off access to water upstream. Whenever Manindi starts dropping below an operational level that was there when Broken, was part of Broken Hill's water supply, and that has continued even though Broken Hill no longer relies on the Manindi lakes. And as I say, we can also provide you with inflows through the northern basin using Border New South Wales data and how that correlates to the water that is in, in Manindi. Manindi does need to hold more than 640 gigalitres before it switches to MDPA control and then the water is shared half and half between New South Wales and Victoria and does become a very important part underpinning allocations at that point and certainly underpinning the capacity to deliver that 1850 to, to South Australia. And obviously, you know, whenever Manindi sort of falls below that, that is a big concern because the, the, the weight then falls back onto just the Murray system to support that. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Can I just, you want to go? Um, Mr. Hare, early in response to one of the questions, you were talking about the change in the, I think it might have been my colleague, Ms. Jackson's question, but it was to do with the, the 20, the 20 year comparator. The change in, in the make up of the, I guess, the land holdings and the owners of those land holdings, the people leaving irrigated agriculture, are they predominantly the, the family-run farming operations, would it be fair to say? And those that the downstream involved in the nuts fruits, it's more the larger corporate farms? Is there, is there, are we losing, I guess one of my questions, are we losing family-run irrigated agricultural operations from the sector because of the way things are currently operating?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, absolutely. Like, just from where I'm from, Warkool, from 2000 and, I think it was 11 to 2000, no, 2006 to 2016, as a part of that Murray Darling Basin communities, community profiling that they did, we lost about sort of 40% of the, of the population of Warkool when that, when that water started to get bought back. And, and if you look at the Aether reports, there's an ever increasing demand for water downstream for whatever purpose that might be. It does seem to sort of fall, fall towards horticulture, but I don't know if Murray Irrigation wants to add to it as well.
I just don't have a comment, sorry. Can I ask what the actual impacts of that, then? I like you talking, you know, 40%, but what does that mean to, to towns like yours?
Oh, it means you don't have as, as good a sense of community, you have businesses shut down, you have, you know, football clubs shut down, you have bus runs shut down. Like, when I started going in year seven, I think it was 2004, there was about 45 people going to town to, to high school and to primary school. Now there's, I think they run a car that's got about four people in it. So those sort of impacts, we have families leaving the area, you have jobs leaving the area. It's, if you're going to strip the productive capacity of the region in the form of water entitlements, then that loss in productivity means you're going to lose community, you're going to lose people, it's a domino effect.
Can I just, so is that picked up anywhere, that information, like, are there like socio-economic impact statements or how is that captured and measured and reflected anywhere?
So I recall there was a SEFTON report into, to look at some of those impacts, and I understand that report outlines some of the concerns and the observations that, that Mr. Hare's made as well. I guess just a comment really, in terms of the, the farms in our region, yeah, quite a lot of the family farm make up. And yeah, so it's predominantly family farming businesses in our region.
Any more questions?
So can I just add to that as well? Um, just the, you know, the Darcy and Michael touched on a really important thing here, which is the impact for the pool of water available for growing food and fibre, if that is further shrunk through further purchases and transfers. You know, Rose, you brought up a very good point about what's the impact on the capacity to grow food and fibre and the affordability and availability of staples such as rice, and it has a direct impact on that. And, you know, it's, it's really, if you're looking at market impacts on how the market, you know, sort of market distortion, a market manipulation and catching calm, capturing the market can affect communities and regional economies and also the environment. The SEFTON report, the Productivity Commission report, several reports do already touch on this. And there is also the 2016 community profiles that were done by the Murray Darling Basin Authority. Not a hell of a lot more water has been recovered since then, making the pools smaller. So they are still relevant in the way that they highlight the impacts on various communities of water recovery to that point throughout the basin. So there is quite a, quite a large literature, quite a large pile of reports there focusing on that. I'm happy to provide some details. And again, I love a graphic, so the 2016, as you can see very starkly what the impacts are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right. Thank you very much for coming. I know that a number of questions have been taken on notice from Mr. McCallman and Mr. Hare. The secretary will be in contact with you soon and you'll have 21 days to respond. Thanks very much for coming. We'll now have a break until 1:45 for lunch. Thank you. We're ready to go. All right. Mike's been noisy than before. Can we turn the squawk down a little bit?
Can you just turn that down a bit?
That's better. Thank you. That's it. Okay. Are you there, Mr. Kio?
Uh, yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I've got you. Thanks very much. Would you like to state your full name and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation, please?
Uh, Michael John Kio, Deputy Chair, Australian Competition and Consumer Commission, and I'm happy to take an oath.
Thank you. Proceed.
I swear the evidence given, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you very much. Would you like to make a short opening statement?
Thank you, I would. The Murray Darling Basin... The Murray Darling Basin water markets are critical to the efficiency and productivity of Australian agriculture. Water trading in the basin had its origins in informal arrangements between neighbouring farmers, where one farmer's surplus water could be transferred to a neighbour. Over the past two decades, it has evolved into a complex basin-wide set of markets with an average annual value of more than one point eight billion dollars per year. Water trading has brought substantial benefits to water, to many water users across the basin. Water markets allow irrigators to increase their available water at critical times in a crop or production cycle, to earn income by selling their water rights when they are more valuable to someone else, to expand production or to release capital for investment in their business. In turn, water trading promotes efficiency of dependent industries and delivers broader benefits to the economy. The benefit of water markets is demonstrated by the fact that despite tough and volatile climatic conditions, the value of production from irrigated agriculture in the Southern Basin has trended upwards in real terms since two thousand and ten, eleven. The benefits derived from water trading rely on fair and efficient water markets underpinned by an environmentally healthy river system. This depends on, first, a governance framework that ensures trading rules and regulations are developed and implemented with a basin-wide perspective, acknowledging the river system's physical characteristics and appropriately managing the impacts of that trade. Second, a clear and consistent framework for trading across the basin. And third, regulation that promotes open, fair and transparent trading, which is robustly and consistently enforced across the basin. In its two thousand and twenty-one report on the findings of the Murray Darling Basin Water Markets Inquiry, the A C C found that basin water markets lack many features that make markets work effectively. In particular, there are scant rules governing the conduct of market participants and no particular body to oversee water trading activities undermining confidence in fair and efficient markets. Under current arrangements, trading behaviours that can undermine the integrity of markets, such as market manipulation, are not prohibited. Insider trading prohibitions are insufficient and information gaps make these types of detrimental, detrimental conduct difficult to detect. There is a lack of quality, timely and accessible information for water market participants. Differences in trade processes and water registries between the basin states prevent participants from gaining a full, timely and accurate picture of water trade, including price, supply and demand. Key policy decisions and changes to river operations that can significantly affect the market are often poorly communicated to market participants with the potential to further undermine market confidence and result in poor business decisions. The complex nature of the basin's market settings means that markets, trading systems and opportunities are best understood and leveraged by professional traders and large agribusinesses with the time and knowledge to analyse and navigate the complexity. Current trading rules and processes do not always reflect the constraints associated with the hydrological characteristics of storages and river systems. These market architecture deficiencies can result in adverse impacts on stakeholders. And finally, changing conditions such as reduced inflows, shifts in water use, declining channel capacity and increasingly binding trade restrictions are challenging key assumptions that underpin current trade arrangements and the design of the tradable water rights markets. These assumptions need to be reassessed so that water markets operate more efficiently in close connection with river systems' physical characteristics into the future. A serious additional consequence of these problems is that many water users reported they do not trust the markets and the institutions in it to be fair or working to the benefit of water users, in particular irrigation farmers. These problems are impeding informed and confident trading and investment to support efficient agricultural production. The A C C recommended twenty-nine reforms to restore confidence in water markets across the basin and to improve their operation and efficiency so they work better for market participants and deliver more benefits for the Australian economy. The A C C recommended reforms which can be summarised under four main headings. These are governance of the basin water markets, market integrity and conduct, trade processing and water market information and market architecture. In relation to market governance, the A C C recommended the establishment of a single agency with the power and the resources to oversee the market, to enforce market rules and to provide advice to government on future market development. In relation to market integrity and conduct, the A C C identified a need for basin-wide market conduct and integrity legislation coupled with a mandatory code for market intermediaries such as brokers. This needs to be enforced and supported by the availability of comprehensive and detailed market information. In relation to trade processing and market information, the A C C recommended the establishment of a common digital protocol on a basin-wide basis to enable the exchange of water market information, incorporating or in conjunction with the development of a digital platform as a single repository of water trade information and the establishment of a public-facing information system to make accurate and timely water market information publicly available. This would operate in conjunction with standard rules and processes for water market announcements. And finally, on market architecture, the A C C recognised that existing inquiries and reform processes offered the opportunity to improve the basin's market architecture, to better integrate water markets and water management and to address the impacts of trade. The A C C made recommendations regarding commitments to metering and monitoring water use, better system modelling, to increase transparency of water allocation decisions, clearer communications of plans for responses to delivery shortfalls, improvements to inter-valley trade mechanisms and clearer processes for the delivery of environmental water. The A C C also recommended that a body such as the proposed Water Markets Agency be given oversight of the development of a long-term reform agenda for market architecture. This suite of reforms proposed by the A C C is now the subject of careful consideration by the Department of Climate Change, Energy, Environment and Water, working with its basin state counterparts. The Principal Advisor, Mr. Daryl Quinlevan, is currently preparing advice for the Commonwealth Minister on the priorities and sequencing of agreed reforms. Since the release of the report, Commonwealth and basin state agencies have directly or indirectly taken steps to address a number of the issues identified. These include making improvements to the information available in the New South Wales and Victorian state water registers, including reasons for trade and struck date information. In principle, support for relevant governments to amend the basin plan to remove the grandfather tag's exemption at the next available opportunity. Consultation with stakeholders on improving the operation of inter-valley transfer arrangements, including Water New South Wales considering options for the administration of the Murumbidgee IVT arrangements, the Victorian Government adopting permanent rules governing gold and to Murray trade and the Schedule D review to consider improvements to arrangements in effect under the Murray Darling Basin Agreement. Increased information being published on a variety of issues relevant to trade and its impacts, including the risk of shortfalls, conveyance losses and better understanding the driving, the drivers of changing water use and delivery patterns. And finally, the Inspector General of Water Compliance has identified enforcement of trade-related basin, basin plan water trading rules as a priority, stating that it will focus on actions to improve understanding of and compliance with these rules. Reforms will critically depend upon more timely, accurate and comprehensive data but have the potential to deliver increased benefits from the utilisation of the basin's scarce water resources. I'm happy to take questions, noting that due to the technical nature of many issues regarding water markets and trading, some of these may have to be taken on notice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keo. Question?
I can, Mr. Keo, thank you so much. It's Rose Jackson here. I just wondered if you were able to provide us any more information on the timetable, both for the advice to the Commonwealth Minister from the Principal Advisor and also any sense of the timelines for the sequencing of reforms that, that he might be recommending? I mean, I guess the context of this question is obviously, there's an obvious benefit to the federal government leading reform in this area in that it will apply nationally to all the basin states. But in the absence of any sort of more short-term action, there's obviously more, perhaps more pressure on states to sort of go it alone, as it were. So I just sort of thought any information you could provide us as to timetables for federal reform initiatives would be useful.
Yeah, thanks for that. As I mentioned, Daryl Quinlevan has been appointed as Chair of the Expert Advisory Group, providing advice to the Minister at a federal level, including on a timeline of implementation of reforms. He's been spending quite a lot of time consulting with the states. They are currently in the process of developing a draft roadmap and we understand that will shortly be provided to the federal minister. But it's our understanding in saying that, that the states have indicated a range of initiatives that they believe can be adopted in the short term and will improve a lot of the issues we identified. But others, and in particular things like the market architecture issues, will need much more considered and longer timeframes involved. But, for example, Water New South Wales has already been implementing its new wave programme to enhance the information available about water trades and the scope of that information. A similar thing is available in Victoria and the South Australian Government, for example, has also committed to upgrade and digitise its trading information and make that more readily available. So there are initiatives happening, as you indicated, at a state level independently, but they are subject to a degree of coordination. And I think there's been good general agreement between the states about the steps they can take and the sort of timetable that will be available. But until that roadmap, if, if, if we would call it that, from Daryl Quinlevan who's released, that, that hasn't been finalised.
Thank you for that. I might just ask one more question and then my colleagues can jump in and come back to me if there's time. I wondered what consideration you had given to compliance mechanisms within the sort of either the rules-based framework or the model code of conduct or the oversight? I mean, presumably you primarily had financial penalties in mind for breaches of the framework once it is put in place. I just wondered if that was right? If you'd given any sense to what some of those penalties might look like or whether there were other compliance mechanisms that you had envisaged for people who might potentially breach elements of the framework once it was in place?
Yeah, thanks for that question. And I think it's important to differentiate some of the compliance issues. So there is existing compliance issues within states. For example, the interim inspector general, the inspector general, as it's now known, is, is working on a range of issues with the states around metering, around reporting of trades and those sorts of things. So that compliance is already underway and you're seeing some of those outcomes already. In relation to a code of conduct for trade intermediaries and some broad legislative regulation around market behaviour, that would presumably come within existing legislative frameworks that the A C C administers. So for example, we already administer a number of industry codes. And while it's, it's not certain we would have that responsibility by way of an example, existing industry codes in the horticulture, franchising and dairy industry have a range of different compliance and enforcement measures associated with them. So we can address issues of a minor nature administratively, either through corrective action being taken or through legally binding undertakings. We can issue what we refer to as infringement notices. So they typically amount to perhaps a penalty of the order of ten to fifteen thousand dollars, where the party receiving it concedes they've made a mistake and agrees to address it. Or it can result in litigated outcomes where there are significant penalties in the orders of millions of dollars for breaches of the legislation. So that's really just giving you an example of the legislation we currently administer. And if it were to be of a similar nature in relation to the proposed conduct and code, that's a sort of an indication of the approach that might be taken.
Thanks, Mr. Keo. It's Mick Veachy from the Labor Party. We've heard evidence today, and I have no doubt that in your exercise, you would have heard very similar information. But there appears to be an inherent imbalance in the market operation where the professional traders and the large agribusiness seem to have a, have the time and resources to analyse and navigate the basin water markets where the, the, the family-based or smaller operations don't. What, what should we, I mean, my concern is this puts at risk for those smaller operations, they provide food and fibre for our domestic markets. And if they can't get the water to do that, that has an impact on our domestic markets. So in your, in your recommendations and findings, have you structured a way where we can provide a bit of assurance and I guess limit the impact on the, the family-based or smaller irrigated farmers, irrigation farmers?
Look, thanks for that question. And that was certainly a key point we made in our inquiry findings that the complexities of these markets is such that, you know, it requires a full-time, dedicated and skilled staff resource to adequately navigate them and take advantage of them. And that's well beyond the resources of individual family farming businesses. And, and that, you know, certainly serves to undermine their confidence that those markets are working appropriately. So when we drill down to further investigate those issues, I think there's two things came out. One is the complexities of the rules. But secondly is the inadequacy of the information made available about the, about the market and the outcome of, of trading. So, you know, when we started to try and look at market behaviour, for example, we selected the eighteen nineteen water market year and had to go through a very comprehensive data mining and matching exercise to give ourselves any confidence we could clearly understand what was happening in the market and identify whether in fact market manipulation or insider trading or a range of those sort of activities were occurring. So, you know, we had multiple staff resources on that specialised analysis and, and had to look at something in the order of six million records overall and then match them all to try and come together with a clear picture of what was happening in one trading year. And that all stemmed from the inadequacy of the recording of information and the reporting of information about the trade. So we, we feel that improving the rules, particularly for intermediaries, so that it's clear who they're operating for, when they're trading on their own account, giving them a requirement to operate in the best interests of their customers, that is important. But also really focusing on But also really focusing on much better provision of information so that that information is transparently available in a timely fashion. And we even went as far as suggesting it should be through a single digital portal so that it's readily accessible, including information, for example, on market announcements by government authorities and those sorts of things, because all of those have an impact on the market. So we feel there's an awful lot could be done and is starting to be done to dramatically improve that market information and make it much more transparent so that the disadvantage that individual and solo traders have in the market is minimised and they can be a bit more confident about their ability to actively trade when they need to.
And, Mr. Keo, sort of based on what you're saying, but also from the submissions, do you think the fundamentals of this particular trading market are being challenged?
There are some significant challenges. I think they relate to some of the market architecture issues. In other words, situations where the ability to trade water isn't matched by the ability to physically transfer that water. And the fact that the time of trade is separate from the time of delivery. So there are some really challenging issues there. I think the other challenging issues, and you've probably had them put before you, are issues like conveyance loss. In other words, if I sell 100 megalitres of water out of the Hume Dam, by the time it gets to South Australia, how many megalitres of water should the buyer get? Because there are losses on the way through. So that is a problem. We've got constraints around places like the Barmerchoke, et cetera, where there's only so much water can be transferred on a regular basis through that particular constraint. And the rules don't always adequately cover that. So there's a range of those sorts of issues that we think need to be addressed and need to be addressed on a basin-wide basis, not just by individual states acting in isolation or sometimes in contrary interest to some of the other states. But I don't think it means that the fundamental model is flawed or the notion that the best way to manage the scarce resources between irrigators is via a market. But you're right, there are some fundamental challenges that really do need to be addressed. And some of them arise from this wonderful thing called the federation. But seeing that, that's what it is, that's what we have to deal with.
Mr. Keo, we might try and sort that out as part of the inquiry.
Yeah, I wish. Mr. Keo, in your preamble, you talked about you'd seen, or the ACC has seen, increasing productivity and, you know, a trend upwards since 2010. Do you have a view on the quality or the mix of that growth? And I'm particularly thinking in terms of the mix changing from family-based farming to more industrial farming?
Yeah, look, you know, there are a range of socio-economic issues that emerge from this market and from any market. It's always difficult to create a balance there. I think one of the lessons from other markets is that if you try to fix all those issues by rigging the market, so to speak, or adjusting the market, you sometimes create more problems than you solve. And sometimes those problems that emerge through the adjustments that a market results in are better addressed separately, in other words, directly. So I think that's important to keep in mind. I think the second thing to keep in mind is that whilst those adjustments are occurring, there is another adjustment occurring in a sense that holders of water are making decisions about whether they want to retain that water, whether they want to trade it to someone else, whether they want to pass it on to other members of their family. So that there's a whole range of factors come into play in those changes that are occurring in communities in the basin. And not all of those are determined or as a result of the water market. There are quite a few other economic factors at play as well. So I think, yes, we recognise that not all market outcomes are good outcomes in a sense of the local community or the local economy. But you are probably better off addressing those through other mechanisms rather than rigging the market to try and adjust for those things.
Well, very largely, and I'm listening to the evidence this morning, very largely, the unfettered market is very much driving the shape of these communities down here and investment decisions. And you raised that in your answer just now. What other mechanisms then would you address? Because you're talking about something else other than the market. I mean, the theory being that if we have a proper, regulated and informed market, which we don't have now, that people could make informed decisions in terms of investment and understand what they're putting their money into and understand what the likely returns may be, knowing that they have some confidence the market won't dud them. And very much the evidence today was that people were very unhappy with a market that seems to, let's call it, enjoy insider trading and all sorts of other abuses.
Yeah, look, no question about that. We, as indicated by our 29 recommendations, we think the market needs very substantial reform so that it actually operates in an efficient manner and that participants can engage with confidence, knowing they're getting the right signals and there's certain rules and requirements in place to keep the market fair. But, yeah, so there's no question about that. And certainly we heard that loud and clear in a lot of our engagement with stakeholders throughout the basin.
Well, that leads me to the next part.
That doesn't mean there won't be subsequent adjustments. For example, the move out of dering into horticulture is driven in part by changes in dairy pricing, not necessarily the fact that there is a water market. So I guess that was what my answer was getting at.
No, no, I understand that. There'll always be other economic factors that drive the mix. But in the end of the day, this whole region dwells, lives, survives, grows, dies on the basis of affordable and accessible water. And it is the largest driver. To what degree have you engaged stakeholders so far? And I'm not just talking about primarily the most, to my mind, the most important stakeholders being farmer stakeholders.
Yeah, we spent, as part of our inquiry process, we travelled right through the basin. We convened, I think it was around about 14 or 15 workshops, including, I think, probably in that very room that you're sitting in at the moment. And we had quite a large role out of those. We then obviously received a lot of submissions and a lot of input from various stakeholders. We put out a draft report and sought submissions in response to that, which were received. And then we revisited quite a number, about five, I think, regional centres when we'd completed our report and went through that with the audiences and discussed it as well. So there has been, well, in association with our inquiry, there's quite a deal of community engagement, both through submissions but also through town hall meetings in centres right throughout the basin.
As far as the ultimate legislative framework, how do you see that coming together? Do you see that being a cooperative framework? That the states work within the federal framework, much as the MDVA is structured at the moment? Or is the federal looking to take control of the constitutional rights of the states to control water?
No, I don't think the feds, well, you would need to ask the federal government that. But I think the model that exists in a number of areas at the moment, which is that cooperative federalism whereby there is, for example, federal legislation which is mirrored in the provisions of state legislation. For example, Australian Consumer Law and in quite a few other markets, there's that sort of model in place. And I think that's the model that would be anticipated, would be utilised in this case.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I would, I don't know whether I've got this formula. Mr. Keo, it's Scott Barrett speaking. I don't know whether I've got this formulated as a question, but it seems from what you said earlier and also from some other witnesses earlier, when this was first set up a decade or so ago, there was was set up with the best intention and looked like it would work to deliver some really good outcomes. You mentioned, you know, in the lean years, someone could trade off their water and get it back when they needed it. Are there still examples, first of all, I guess, is that correct? And are there examples where that does still work for positive outcomes for our family farmers, irrigating farmers?
Oh, very much so. I think it does work. And we were given numerous examples where that worked. For example, the case of a farmer moving to more intensive irrigation systems, which are more efficient, and being able to sell some of their existing water, which they would no longer need, to fund the capital investment required to undertake that upgrade in their irrigation system. So, you know, that's a very simple model. We've seen others where, for example, a farmer wanted to expand and buy the property next door. They may not have had access to sufficient credit or capital to do that. But by trading some of their water, they were able to do that and then buy some of that water back as needed on the allocation market. So there's a whole range of those sort of examples given to us as we engage with the community that apply to this very day. And in fact, I think the thing that really struck me quite strongly is that when you look at the asset base of the average irrigation farmer in the basin, about 40% of that asset base is taken up in the value of their water entitlements. So that's quite a significant component of the business of irrigation farmers, and that applies whether they're big farmers or little farmers. So I think it is very important to keep that in mind in terms of the benefits and the ability or the flexibility that water markets give irrigation farmers in the basin.
Why is it working in those examples and then very much not working in lots of other examples we're hearing?
I'm not sure when you say that is not working. I mean, I think there's certainly criticism of corporate investors participating in the market. And we had a detailed analysis in our inquiry of the four major corporate investors. I mean, when it was all boiled down, our finding was that at most they held around 10% of the water in any of the trading areas. And we certainly, in looking in detail at their activities, and we had them in and interviewed them and were able to obtain all their trading records over quite a few years, we didn't find any adverse outcome. Sure, they were able to do things in the market that perhaps others weren't because of their better information or resourcing. But there was nothing aberrant in what they were doing. In fact, in a lot of cases, they were accumulating smaller parcels that were available in the market and then making them available to buyers as a consolidated package. So, you know, quite a lot of the things they were doing, even though individuals raised criticisms of them in relation to particular instances, when we looked in detail at them, we weren't able to identify what you would call bad behaviour or apparent market behaviour by those large investors. And they do play quite an important role in the market in giving it liquidity when, at different times, there's not great demand in the market. So, yeah, and look, you will certainly hear from a lot of individuals who are critical of their operations. But on the other hand, when you look at it in detail, as I said, we didn't find strong evidence of that.
Can I, one more?
Yeah, please.
We have heard criticisms today, and I'll try and, you know, we've heard about a lack of trust and imbalance between family farmers and the bigger traders. We've even heard about an adverse impact on productivity and in a flying effect on the shrinking of towns and communities. Acknowledging that there are some criticisms and, I guess, with that possibly a couple of flaws in the system, will the recommendations you've put forward, you think, go a long way to addressing those criticisms?
We believe so and certainly that's the basis of our recommendations. We feel the market needs considerable reform. And I think one of the things that you encounter when you look at this in detail is that the water management systems in the various states were set up to manage the water. And then the market grew on the back of that. And there wasn't always much focus on how the market operated. The market was, in a sense, tacked on to the water management system. And I think it's grown to the stage now where it needs a much more dedicated focus to manage that market, just the same as the Australian Stock Exchange manages the share market in Australia. So that was the basis of our recommendation to really bring some focused attention to and focused management of those markets and the way they operate to improve the confidence of market participants, including in particular, the smaller-scale farmers.
Where are you up to with finalising the roadmap for implementation?
I understand that Daryl Quinliven's draft report is shortly to be provided to the Minister, although obviously the change in government at a federal level and the resulting change in the Minister may have slowed that process down slightly. But you perhaps need to ask him directly where that's up to.
Thank you.
Just, perhaps I might ask a couple of slightly more technical questions, particularly following on from my colleague, Mr. Barrett's questions. It's Rose Jackson here. Apologies, Mr. Keo, I just started talking.
Right.
One of, you know, I thought that was an interesting interchange between him, himself and yourself around, you know, the current operation of the markets and some of those bigger players. And, you know, your views potentially and some of the benefits that they may bring. One of the things that has been brought to our attention today is, for example, the way that, under the current market rules, people can park their high-security allocation on a general security carryover licence and that the sort of market rules incentivise that. And, you know, that's not illegal and it's probably, well, it is financially beneficial for them to do that. But it's not necessarily great for our water resources, you know, water. The expectation of high-security licences is, you know, that they are constructed on the basis that that water will be used and we need flow-through in our dams and our rivers. And so those kind of things are quite problematic. And so I just wondered if you had a sort of reflection on that. I mean, it's not that any particular individual or group is doing that, but it is happening. We've received evidence on that today. And, you know, it does potentially have quite negative consequences. So I just wondered, you know, is that something that you have identified and are concerned about?
Yeah, we looked in very close detail at issues like carryover parking. Those issues arise in some respects because of the variation in rules between the different securities associated with different water entitlements and the different rules in different states. And the ability of individual traders to move water onto different accounts to take advantage of those. They're not without risk, as is evident when, for example, storages get close to full and different situations arise. So I think there is an argument that better coordination of the rules between states, which would effectively remove or reduce some of those incentives, may be needed to deal with the um, may be needed to deal with the adverse consequences that can sometimes be associated with those activities. Um, but the notion, uh, the 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 ability to carry over can be quite important. Um, for example, if you're a a grape grower at Griffith on high security and uh, you've got extra vines you want to irrigate, uh, you don't want to run out of water. So the ability to save some of your water in a wet year and have it available, um, the following year when it's a bit drier is 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 quite important to the efficiency of uh, your business. So um, i- i- it it is a complex question though. I think we devoted a couple of chapters to that in our report because um, it has quite a number of aspects to it, but certainly, um, i- i- it comes out of the the federation again and the the fact that there's different rules in different jurisdictions. And and certainly there's worth considering whether they might need to be rationalised a bit.
Hmm. The the next one, um, that I wanted to ask about again, and we received evidence this morning in relation to the way that um, I mean, I sort of just broadly described them as sort of delivery costs are borne by landowners, not water entitlement holders. Um, the sort of suggestion that that was, you know, potentially unfair, the the comparison that we were given um, in evidence this morning was, you know, rates, local government rates are paid by property owners, not, um, renters. You know, in the example of people who um, own investment properties, they pay local government rates as the property owner in an area, the renter doesn't pay and that ultimately it's unfair to charge the landowner um, the delivery cost and not the water entitlement holder. I I wondered if you had a view on that?
Uh, I think that issue relates to um, the way in which irrigation corporations operate and the way in which their costs are allocated amongst members of that corporation. And the the fact that those members include both or have both irrigation rights and delivery rights associated with um, their water. Um, and and certainly a lot of those issues arise from the internal rules of those irrigation infrastructure operators. Um, we've certainly looked at some of those from the point of view uh, of of whether they're properly communicated to members and whether they're fairly um, uh, applied. But, um, o- often they come down to the particular rules of operation of that irrigation corporation and how it's administered. So they they can be quite complex issues, um, and they are often internal to um, that corporation a- as you would no doubt have heard this morning.
Hmm. And it wouldn't be your view that that tha- that the operation of those rules would be an appropriate thing for regulation, say by, you know, the independent oversight body, um, you know, in terms in terms of dictating to them more specifically how those internal rules should operate?
There are some general rules under um, the Water Act which relate to, um, uh, the the, how they uh, can behave, those irrigation infrastructure operators can behave in terms of, for example, transfers out uh, and those sort of things. Um, we certainly canvassed a lot of those issues in chapter fourteen of our inquiry report. Um, uh, so there are some broad general rules um, under which they operate, but then they obviously have the ability to set their own internal rules as well. And we didn't uh, go into a great detail in those because it it really is between the members, uh, how they operate in some circumstances.
Hmm. I think the next question I had, um, you know, i- in response to my earlier question about compliance mechanisms and at various times, you know, there's been comparisons between the way that, for example, you know, the financial markets operate and the way that the water market operates, they ob- obviously operate at present quite differently. There's a bit of a sense that perhaps some of the regulation of the what financial markets might be beneficial, um, in the water trading market, might, you know, as as I think the obvious one, and you know, you've identified it and it comes up a lot is the rules around insider trading, um, you know, being quite different and probably insufficient in the water trading market. But then, of course, you know, I just wanted to draw out, you know, any reflections you had on the comparison between the financial market is obviously quite sort of ethereal thing in a way, um, and the water trading market which has sort of genuine physical constraints, you know, wa- water being a genuine, at times very limited and scarce resource. And so, you know, it's not as though it's sort of shares or money that's moving around. It it's often it, it's it's a very physical thing. It's often a very physically limited thing. And so how far can we take that comparison between, say, the financial markets and the water trading markets, considering those differences?
Yeah, look, I think there's certainly elements of the regulation of financial markets that, um, broadly speaking, we've recommended should be adopted in relation to water markets. So for example, um, the clarity around the responsibility of water market intermediaries or brokers um, who who they're operating on behalf of. I mean, we saw examples where you know, a broker was operating on behalf of both the buyer and seller and 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 taking a commission from both. Um, and neither of the buyer or seller were aware of that, uh, and that's not uncommon. So that sort of clarity of responsibility and um, framework for, uh, good practice is not there in the water market as it is in the financial markets. And I don't think anyone would say the financial market's perfect, but I think it's a lot more transparent and it's a lot clearer um, who's doing what for whom in that market. Similarly, there's rules around market manipulation, there's rules around insider trading, there's rules uh, about market behaviour and they are enforced. Well, that's not the case in, to a large degree, in the water market. So that's why we've recommended the, for example, code of practice for water market intermediaries and legislative provisions around uh, market manipulation and and misbehaviour. And interestingly enough, um, i- i- it's probably the only time I can ever remember an industry actually agreeing, um, uh, to uh, a recommendation like that. So the um, water brokers have expressed their support for a mandatory code of conduct because they uh, understand that, uh, as I understand it, that the confidence of participants depends on everyone adopting a reasonable uh, level of behaviour rather than uh, a few individuals perhaps undermining the confidence of the whole market. So uh, you know, this is the only time I can ever remember where an industry group said, yes, we want a mandatory code. So it it really does highlight um, the importance of that. Uh, uh, the the further issue you touched on there is is the relationship between uh, what you can trade or or the trading rules and the physical movements of water. And certainly that issue which we sort of broadly labelled as market architecture, in other words, ensuring that the trading rules reflect, um, what is physically possible in the market. Um, uh, we, when that's a major area we think needs reform and you've certainly touched on some of those issues, um, in your discussions this morning.
And presumably, you know, e- even within that market architecture, um, once it, once it was established or better established, there would need to be flexibility because what can be sort of physically what is physically possible at one time, for example, right now, when water is in abundance, is not necessarily physically possible at other times when when the midst of serious drought and water is incredibly scarce. And so presumably it's very important that the water trading market is flexible enough to operate effectively for participants, but also for our environment, our rivers at both those extremes.
Yep. No, we'd agree with that. And I think, um, slightly extending on from that, um, part of the issue we identified amongst water users was the lack of clarity of government decision-making and uh, regulatory change um, to reflect some of those issues that you're talking about. In other words, the difference between an extremely dry period and an extremely wet period. So, um, uh, informing the market adequately uh, of those changes is 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 part of the problem we identified as well. So yes, you have to be able to make those decisions and make them based on good robust modelling and good robust um, measuring and monitoring information, but then you also need to make sure that they're available to the market in a way that doesn't undermine confidence, um, just the same as the continuous disclosure rules operate in the share market. Um, so tha- that's part and parcel of that same issue.
Hmm. I don't have any more questions.
Well, questions, I might just jump in, uh, then. Uh, so thinking about market architecture and the the recommendations that you have made, what has the A triple C kind of recommended or or, um, did you explore the issue in relation to the fact that, you know, all of the nut plantations, for example, uh, the way in which, um, water is being sold, you know, in periods of of, um, low water availability, uh, things are going to get worse with the increasing um, increasing plantings of, um, nuts, particularly as we heard this morning, um, uh, south of the Barmer choke. What ca- what what is your recommendation around the way in which that can be managed so that there is water still available for other uses? Is that a government, um, uh, regulation uh, issue or is it a market architecture issue? What's your your thoughts on that?
Um, well, it is a market architecture issue in a sense that the rules around um, flows through the choke, um, inter-valley trades, out of different river systems, et cetera, all need to reflect, um, the reality of, uh, the capacity to move water up and down the river. Um, they also need to reflect the potential, for example, for conveyance loss at different times, um, and those sorts of things. So um, uh, we, uh, didn't make any firm recommendations on those because they are quite technical and detailed issues that need to be looked at. Um, but I guess, um, i- i- in a broad sense, our encouragement was that they should be addressed and worked on, that they shouldn't be just uh, if you like, kicked down the road and left, uh, till they become a really serious problem in a really critical time. Uh, and I think that's unfortunately, um, and speaking in a very general sense, um, what might be considered to have happened to some of those issues up until now. So hopefully, um, our report and a lot of the other initiatives, um, uh, might provide an impetus to address those issues in a way that's technically sound and which means the river operates and the rivers operate, um, in in a better manner, uh, longer term. And that then may change the nature of pricing and demand for water, for example, um, below the choke in those, uh, in those, uh, um, horticultural developments compared to upstream users. Uh, I mean, we weren't, we weren't trying to predict that, but we really recognise that the rules have to be and the and the way the river is operated has to be um, better reflected, um, uh, in terms of the constraints and the limitations that are available there.
Because i- i- it's one of the 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 most serious or key negative consequences of the water trading market, isn't it? It's not just the it's not just the the physical contr- constraints of the Barmer choke I'm referring to, or the, um, environmental degradation of moving so much water down, uh, the river at a particular time to reach a certain crop. It's the fact that certain crops are being priced out of the market because of the, well, specifically because of, um, particularly because of water trading and the fact that now those plantations, you know, permanent plantings, they will pay almost anything, if you like. And it's because you can trade between, between, uh, valleys um, because those those growers can can afford more and they've made the investment that it's kind of having these very negative consequences throughout throughout other valleys. So did the A triple C look at that in particular? I'm not talking about the way in which the water moves through the system, but the what has been communicated to us today and in other in other forums really are the the negative consequences of enabling, uh, water trading between valleys and, um, de-bundling, unbundling the the water from the land in the first place.
Yeah, look, there's there's a range of consequences associated with water trade as we canvassed very early on, um. You know, I think there's a tendency to think, um, that that some directional, uh, change is inevitable. Um, I mean, I I guess it needs to be recalled that those investors in those, for example, horticultural developments, um, have, uh, an element of risk associated with those investments, um, and um, have to face those, uh, just the same as anyone else in the basin does. So the assumption that, um, that water will inevitably flow to them and the assumption that they will be able to inevitably pay more for water than anyone else will, um, doesn't necessarily always hold. Um, uh, you know, changes in the almond market in California, changes in, um, uh, other markets in Asia and 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 South America can have a very big impact on that. And we've seen that in, um, a range of other industries as well. We've seen a change in the rice industry, we've seen the expansion of the cotton industry, we've seen, uh, reduction in dering, um, uh, reduction in annual crops, the the, but they all wax and wane depending on a a range of market factors, uh, not just the water market. So I I I mean, I don't, I I think you have to make sure that the water market accurately reflects the physical characteristics of the river and the ability to move water around. But beyond that, you start to, um, uh, run into, uh, uh, possible perverse outcomes if you start to try and, um, dictate what the market might determine is the price of water or the value of water into the future.
I don't think you've heard anything I said. Thanks very much.
Sorry, that was a complete blank there.
I forgot to press the little red button here.
I thought I'd put everyone to sleep.
No, you haven't. We we really appreciate your contribution and we'd like to do it for another hour, but since we don't have another hour, we'll we've heard it before, okay. Now, uh, uh, in a very sincere way, thanks very much for for coming and giving us your, uh, the answers to our questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck with your inquiry.
Thank you. We now have. All right. Welcome, Mr. Cook and Mr. Frith. Thanks very much for attending, even though you're a long way away. You're welcome. Um, good day. Maybe starting with you, Mr. Cook, please state your full name and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation for us.
Yes, sure. Um, Nick Cook, uh, manager of property and water, Yankole Australia. And, uh, anything, I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now uh, about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Mr. Frith?
Uh, David Frith, uh, policy director with the New South Wales Minerals Council. Uh, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Maybe starting with you, Mr. Cook, would you like to make a short opening statement?
Uh, no, I was, um, I'll hand over to 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 Dave, he's, he was gonna do it.
Oh, David's gonna do it, okay. Mr. Frith, would you like to?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Borzac. Um, well, thanks for the opportunity to appear before the inquiry, uh, today. Uh, as you may be aware, the New South Wales Minerals Council is the peak industry association that represents the minerals industry in New South Wales. Uh, Yankole, who Nick represents, uh, is one of our member companies. Uh, we come to this inquiry probably from a slightly different angle, um, to to some of the previous witnesses that you've had today. Um, the issues that we highlighted in our submission are more statewide issues and associated with uh, New South Wales policy and administrative factors, uh, that are impacting on the efficiency of wo- of water markets uh, and the ability of our members to access the water entitlements they need to comply. they need to comply with their regulatory requirements. These issues have concerned our members for quite some time, so we thought we'd take the opportunity to put them on the record once again through this inquiry. In terms of some broad context, despite being a large industry, the mining industry is a relatively small user of water across the state. Much of the water that mines use is unsuitable for other water users. So, for example, they can use water from saline groundwater aquifers, water that's recycled on-site, or effluent wastewater produced by other industrial premises. But they do require entitlements to account for any water they take from surface water and groundwater resources. And so they have experience trading in the market and also reassigning water within companies as well. Our submission highlighted the industry's concerns with the accuracy of information in the water market, inefficiencies in the administration of water licensing and approvals, and some of the policy settings that we believe are unnecessarily holding water back from the market. And we're happy to take any questions that the committee might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah. It's Mick Veitch. Just very quickly, in the New South Wales Minerals Council submission on the last page, you talk about a lack of a return-flow policy. Could you just expand on what you mean by a return-flow policy? I think I don't understand what it is, but just for the sake of the transcript, if you could expand on that. And two, what is the policy settings that you would like to have in place for that?
So a return-flow policy would essentially allow for net accounting of water taken at any kind of mining facility or other types of facilities as well. So at the moment, there's no opportunity for a licence holder to obtain any credit for high-quality water that they might discharge back into the environment. And there's several cases, and Nick might be able to provide an example or two where that occurs. But once that water is, or when that water is discharged back into the environment, even though it provides a potential resource for downstream water users, there's no ability at the moment for that discharge or that new water that's become available to be accounted for in the water market. So there is provisions within the Water Management Act to provide for a return-flow policy. And there have been several attempts previously to develop a return-flow policy, but they haven't ever eventuated in one being put in place. So that's something that we would like to see progressed.
Yeah, I can just provide a bit of an example if you want, but sorry.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Okay, so in the top part of the Hunter Valley, there's the Golden River Catchment. In the Golden River Catchment, there's two reverse osmosis plants. Would you know reverse osmosis takes salty water and turns it into essentially drinking water? Yankoll has an operation that has a reverse osmosis plant in the upper golden and is discharging around about a full capacity between 10 and 15 million litres per day of drinking water basically into a river catchment. It's sitting, where it's being discharged is just above the Golden River National Park. So from an ecological hydrological perspective, it's maintaining the hydrological connections with the, in the Golden River National Park. But it's also because it's been discharged upstream, there's a lot of dissolved goodies and ecological benefits that that water provides into the system. Now, we're treating that water on-site because we have an excess water on-site. We have an environmental protection license that allows us to discharge that water. It is discharged at drinking water standard from the ARO plant. And today's point about return-flow policy, a return-flow policy would allow us to get credit for that water that we're discharging down the river at the moment. Effectively, it's a free kick for water users downstream of us. Admittedly, any returns-flow policy in the framework that it's going to have to be established, there is an IPART component of it because obviously your IPART charges are built into the water that you extract. This is almost a credit to that, could be a credit to that. But, I mean, IPART smart people, regulatory economists could come up with a way of implementing it. That has been one hurdle that has been put in front of a return-flow policy in the past.
Hi, I have a couple of questions. Thank you. It's Rose Jackson here. My first question is, we've heard some evidence already that participation in the water trading market is pretty difficult and pretty complicated. I just wondered, in terms of your organisations or the organisations you represent, what kind of resources do you have to put into your participation? You know, do you have like a team who manages that stuff? How much energy and effort as organisations do you have to put into being on top of your participation in the water trading market?
At a broad level, our members range in size from relatively large companies like Yankoll to smaller companies. And so the resources that they have available for these types of activities will vary across the industry. In some cases, they do use water brokers to help identify potential trades. Other times, they'll have internal teams looking at this. I'm aware of one company that used to, or tried to use a water broker in one particular circumstance, and that was unsuccessful and had to go through the process of searching the Water Register, identifying all the licence holders within the water source, tracking down their contact details, probably evidence along the lines of what you've heard previously.
Sounds pretty intensive.
Yeah, it can be quite intensive. Obviously, some companies have the resources to be able to undertake that type of work. Smaller companies would be in a different position. Nick, I'm not sure if you want to provide any perspectives from a Yankoll view?
Yeah, we are a large company and there's one resource who does it, and that's me. I don't really have the time to chase up individual water users. If I could go to a single point or database and say, hey, I have some water that we do not want, that we do, we would love to trade with someone and not have to hassle water brokers or interrogate the information myself, that would be wonderful. I think there are way more opportunities to create a water trading marketplace, Facebook Marketplace style thing, where you put something up and say, we want to trade water. In the Hunter Valley, supplementary flow is a very good example of that. Supplementary flows flow outside of the, which occurs in the down-reg plan. We don't need it. We have licences for it. Love to trade them with someone who would need that. But I can't work out, for me to find out who that is, is really hard.
I mean, Mr Cook, you may not be able to assist with this because I think you said you do it yourself. But can either of you give me any sense of what the costs are of engaging a broker? So for companies that are using a water broker, what are the sort of typical or ballpark fees that you might be paying to someone or an organisation of that nature? No, don't ask.
Sorry, I said it near the side of the door.
Thank you.
It's hard to say. Contacting a broker to just have a conversation with them to see if there's anyone out there who usually doesn't in a fee. And then the fees get, the fees that I've had to deal with are associated with the volume of water and the type of water. In the Hunter Valley, high-security water is worth more than anything else typically in a surface water system. So if you're trading high-security water, it is more expensive. The fee typically, the broker fee, depends on how much water you're trading. It's not a flat fee, it's just typically, we want to trade 100 million litres, it's a percentage about, I think it's like, it's a 10% fee, I think, or something along those lines. Or if it's 10 million litres. It's hard to put it, it's hard. Again, the fees associated with, in the water brokering space, I can't see where it's regulated, like in a banking context, for example, or any other trading platform. It doesn't seem to have any regulation around it or oversight on it.
Yeah, that's useful though, thank you. Even that sort of ballpark sense of, you know, that it is linked to the size of the volume of water and potentially sort of, you know, around the 10% with a high security, even that's useful. And also, yeah, the lack of useful feedback on the lack of regulation of that market. I mean, speaking of which, one of the recommendations that has been mentioned a couple of times by other witnesses and came out of the ACCC inquiry was the need for some kind of independent regulator to oversight the water trading market. I just wondered your views on that, whether you supported that? And if so, you know, why you think something like that would be useful?
I do think it needs to occur. I would support it. Transparency around decision-making is always welcomed. And I think in water markets, the markets themselves will function better if there's more transparency around them. People might necessarily like decisions, but if they can see how the decision was made or see how a trade was made, they might be able to get into that space next time around. But at the moment, it's, yeah. Without regulation, I feel the market isn't operating in an optimal way.
You mentioned transparency a couple of times. Again, one of the things that's been mentioned previously is this idea of a public register. And then you've sort of mentioned how that would be beneficial to you as well. The pushback that we've had on that, on that idea is that information is already sort of available. You know, if you pay a sort of small fee, you know, you can get information like that through, I think it's local land services. I mean, how would you respond to that? How would you respond to the idea that we don't need a new, you know, fully transparent, fully accessible public register because that information is, in a way, by and large, available if you know where to look?
I think you hit the nail on the head with the last part of your question, if you know where to look. That to me isn't transparent because if you've got to know where to look, that's not clear and obvious to people on how the water market would operate and who I could go and contact. In our business, as Dave said, like, we're busy and doing a one-person team who sort of looks after a lot of the water stuff. And water is part of my job, the property aspect is the other part of it. I don't really have the time to contact local land services and say, hey, can you find me someone? Or can I please pick up the phone, phone the local land services and hope I get through to someone? I would rather just jump onto a website, spatial-enabled platform where I can click on a particular part of the valley and see what you... I don't need to see every single water user's detail. And I think it would be like, if you had like an expression of interest, I'm a potential trader, I'm a potential wanting to get some water. A system that actually connected those two together would be ideal. I don't believe that all water users' information should be made 100% public because there is some information around that, particularly in the ILOS accounts, that should not be made public. And I think both our statement and the Minerals Council's statement reiterated that. But I do think there is components of that information that would make water trading a hell of a lot easier.
That's all from me for now.
I'll just ask the first question because if the answer to this is one thing, the other question's redundant. Do you face much fluctuation in the price you're paying for water?
No.
Mr Frith, in your submission, you talk about poor administration of water licensing processes. Why do you think there's a problem with the responsibility delineation between DPE Water, Enra and Saywater New South Wales? What's going on there? Can you throw some light on that?
I think that the, I do have a lot of sympathy for the people who work in those agencies because they have been subject to continual changes over the last decade in their structure, in the responsibilities that they hold. Even as recently as April, the water licensing and approvals functions for state significant development was transferred from Enra back to DPE Water. So another recent change. So I think, you know, in that kind of circumstance, it's not really conducive to embedding systemic improvements in the efficiency of the way that you deal with the regulatory framework and administer the regulatory framework. So I think what we'd really like to see is that stability, that ongoing stability and the resources that these agencies need to undertake their functions effectively.
Well, that raises the question, where does the responsibility for New South Wales water reside? Then where would best be put?
That's a good question. Look, you know, potentially the current framework, as it was recently changed, could be appropriate.
Which is?
Enra, I think, on the, as an independent regulator. DPE Water, holding the policy licensing and approvals-type functions. And then Water New South Wales is the operator of the water system. So, you know, it's probably as good as any over the last five or 10 years. And I think if we can get some stability, then they'll have the opportunity to, you know, really focus on improving the way that they're undertaking those functions.
You mentioned in your submission that one company had a report, had to report non-compliance due to delays of around five years approving a valid water licence application. Is that, is that normal, that sort of delay?
Look, unfortunately, I mean, I think that particular issue has been resolved. But it's not, certainly in that water source, it wasn't uncommon. There were quite a few four or five years and still some issues remain unresolved from when that water-sharing plan came into effect in 2016. So unfortunately, yeah, those types of delays are common and still occurring. There's, you know, a more recent example is a member who was trying to assign sufficient entitlements to one of their mines to account for take that is modelled in their approved groundwater model, which has been approved by the agencies. And that model is designed to help them comply with their regulatory approvals. That application was made in May 2021. Should be pretty straightforward because the application has been made to comply with their regulatory requirements. But it took DPE Water 12 months to get back to them to ask for more information about the application. And that application is still outstanding 15 months later. So unfortunately, these problems are still occurring. Pleasingly, the agencies and the New South Wales Government has responded to these issues. And in the recent budget, there was 14.8 million dollars, I believe, allocated to a project to improve water licensing and approvals across the agencies. And so we're hopeful that that project will deliver some longer-lasting improvements in this space.
Thank you. Any further questions?
No, I don't have any.
No, everyone's fine.
Yep.
Looks like we've got no more questions for you, gentlemen. I think, did someone take something unnoticed? Did I catch that earlier? No? Well, I think on that note, we'll finish a little early. Thank you very much for coming. And yeah, well, that concludes our public hearing for today. And we will resume at 3:45pm.
No, we won't.
No, we won't.
We're resuming at 6pm.
We'll be resuming, 6pm for the public forum, I beg your pardon, that's right. 3:45 is something else.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cheers.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you.